Good evening. This May 2nd Board of Education is called to order. I welcome everyone present and those viewing this meeting. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. I'm pleased that you and the rest of the Board of Education is pleased that you have taken the time to join us. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And we do send out a special thought for our employees and families that were affected by the tornado last Friday evening. Our thoughts and prayers are with you. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance is presented by the Heights High JROTC Cadets. Lieutenant Colonel Jacob Berry, Technical Sergeant Sierra Bush, Captain Landon Joint, Master Sergeant Kenneth Howlett. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Colors, hold. Left, raise. Three, stand, arms. Sir, permission to post colors.
You may post the colors.
Thank you, sir. Order, arms. Inward, face. Vote. Three, stand, arms. Please, John, you are further leading. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Order, I say, make.
You may be seated. Please give us a round of applause for the Heights JROTC. Patrick, I believe we're ready to start. Go ahead and give us that first item.
First item, under Reports, Superintendent, Student Advisory Council.
Okay, thank you. Patrick, next item.
Next item, under Reports, good news.
Good evening, President Reeser, Deputy Superintendent Alvarez, and members of the Board. This has to be my favorite Board meeting of the year, not that every meeting isn't my favorite Board meeting, but tonight is an amazing opportunity to see the success that our students have achieved through their time with us as students. It was a little impactful being out in the hallway before the meeting started and seeing faces that I've seen for a number of years getting ready to walk in because they're graduating. And that's really special for all of us. Before I ask Assistant Superintendent Kingry to come forward, I just wanted to address something real quick for the audience because I had a couple of questions before we started. We are paying attention to weather, and in the event something occurs that would cause us to need to depart this room and take shelter, there's a plan, there is a tornado safe room in the building, and we'll all exit out this door to my left. So just know, folks, that we are paying attention and that we'll do everything we can do to make sure we keep everyone safe. Without further ado, it's time to celebrate our students. I am pleased to invite Deputy Superintendent, I just gave you a promotion, Amanda, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools, Amanda Kingry, who will introduce you to our principals and the amazing young people who are making us all proud through the scholarships they've earned.
All right. Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Deputy Superintendent Alvarez, and members of the Board. As we work to empower all students with the 21st century skills and knowledge necessary for success, we are preparing our students to be future-ready through college and career opportunities. So I have learned for this to, sorry, for this success to occur, it takes a great team. Our college and career coordinators and counselors work to prepare and help students understand their post-secondary opportunities. Our principals represent their outstanding faculty and staff who have worked faithfully to make sure these types of opportunities can occur. And so as we have to recognize the work towards graduation starts well before high school, and district employees from pre-K, elementary, middle school, as well as high school, all play an important role in our work. It also takes a family of parents, grandparents, family members. Thank you, guys, for being here this evening, and thanks for sharing your students with us and partnering with your schools for the success of your students. So tonight, we're joined by some amazing seniors that we want to honor their post-secondary achievements. Our seniors are in high demand by many colleges and universities across the state and country. So before we recognize these seniors, I want to share a few statistics with you. Two thousand five hundred thirty-nine, that's the number of students that are anticipated to graduate with the 2022 senior class of Wichita High School. Eight hundred and ninety-one, that's the number of students who are receiving scholarship offers for next year, and those are the ones that we know about because we may have missed some of our students. And then, of course, the amount of dollars in scholarships that we know of that have been offered to our students for the class of 2022 is $59 million, 673,361. That's huge. And like I said, those are the ones that we were able to collect. So we know that there's more out there, but that's a lot of money that's going towards our students for 259. And so I'm going to have each building administrator recognize their students who represent the top 10 scholarships for each of their buildings. So these are your top 10 recipients for funding, or anybody that's receiving $40,000 or more in scholarships. So we're going to recognize all of those students tonight. We have not done this in a while because of COVID. We've just done it virtually, or we just read the names. So tonight, we have the opportunity actually have our students join us. We know we still don't have all of our students here, and we're wondering if maybe the weather played a little bit of part, but we still want to recognize and read the names of all of our students, recognize them today. And so we're going to start with Chester Lewis, our Wichita Alternative in Town East, and I'm going to have the principal Leroy Parks read his names and recognize the students.
Good evening, everyone, members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent, I guess you're here tonight. My name's Leroy Parks. I'm the principal at Chester Lewis Academic Learning Center, which encompasses Town East Learning Center as well. With me tonight is my esteemed colleague, Mrs. Amy Alvarez, our College and Career Coordinator, who works closely and directly with these young men and women. Our scholarship recipients tonight, from left to right, I believe, Ms. Angel Leonard. She will be attending Butler County Community College. Jada Polite-L, she will be attending Wichita State University.
Leroy, I'm going to have them step one or two steps forward.
Okay.
So that the camera can really get a good picture of them.
Okay, no problem. And I might mention that Angel and Jada attend Chester Lewis Alternative High School, and one of our Town East recipients is Edwin Aguilar Ramirez, and he will be going to Wichita State Tech. One student that was unable to make it tonight, and I want to mention her name for the tape, is Bailey Foster. So these are our scholarship recipients for Chester Lewis Academic Learning Center.
Our next school is EI Academy, and we have Rob Dixon here to introduce his students.
Yeah, so we have two amazing students, Leila Mason, who will be going to Baylor University to study abroad in Costa Rica.
Wow.
And Sidney Mitchell, who is going to Newman University.
All right, next we have East High and Principal Sarah Richardson.
President Reeser, Board of Education, thank you so much for allowing me to honor the amazing students at East High School. Collectively, the students of the 144th graduating class from Wichita High School East will have a $13 million, 241,329.40 in scholarship money for the class of 2022 East High. Brought three of my amazing friends with me today, but we'll just kind of go in order. Our top scholarship winner is Luzili Muraz-Dossel with $1.3 million, and she is attending Middlebury College next fall. Annika Bupp is attending Agnes Scott College, and she earned $1 million, 32.48. Math is not my strong suit, I'm sorry. Sorry, okay. Jared is with me tonight. Jared Hudson is attending Vassar College next year, very excited for him, and he earned Then we've got Jordan Belton, who cannot be here tonight, who's attending Creighton University, and she earned $772,336 for the fall. Olivia Wesley, attending Wichita State University with $747,800 for the fall. Cameron Connolly, K-State University, go Cats, for $658,000 worth of scholarship money. Then we've got Lex Dallas, who is here tonight, who is attending Dartmouth College in the fall with $444,450 in scholarship money. We've got Irene Diaw attending Texas A&amp;M with $351,384. Honesty Beaton, who is also a Timothy O'Shaughnessy Scholarship winner, very excited for her, attending Fort Hays, with $241,707.41, which just put us over that top. Good job, Honesty. And Maria Allen, attending Friends University with $230,000, rounds up our top 10, but with a $13 million, $13.2 million, two DELL scholars, a Timothy O'Shaughnessy scholar. We're very proud of the 144th graduating class of Wichita High School East, so round of applause for East High.
Okay, next we will have Heights High School, and Eric Filippi is the principal there.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, Deputy Superintendent Alvarez, President Reeser, and members of the Board. I'm Eric Filippi, and I'm the principal and 1992 graduate of Wichita Heights High School. It is my honor to announce Heights High School's top 10 scholarship award recipients. First up, I would like to introduce and recognize Mr. David Giede, our College and Career Center Coordinator. All right, I got Ziana Walker Louisville. Toler Phipps is going to be matriculating to Arizona State, and he is a national merit finalist and Timothy O'Shaughnessy finalist. Mariah Marcy, Abala University. Ethan Basada, Colorado College. Kayden Long, Wichita State. Number six on my list, but number one in my heart, Erica Filippi, will be going to Butler County. She's at home ill right now. Emily Medbury, Bethel. Nida Poncho, University of Houston. Andre Carter, Wichita State University. And Jonathan Banks, Wichita State University.
Okay, next up, we have North High, and we have Stephanie Wasco, the principal.
We can have them stand right here in the front at first.
North High, come up to the front, yeah.
And just line up in front here, and they don't need to see us, they need to see you. Perfect.
I am so very proud to recognize the following seniors of North High School, class of 2022. These students represent the top 10 scholarship recipients for Wichita North High School. Elena Welch, $1,829,140, and she plans to attend Friends University. Beela Bengi, $698,800, and she plans to attend the University of Kansas. Dora Brummett, $493,836, she plans to attend University of Alabama. Jennifer Fernandez Gonzalez, $488,836, and she plans to attend Wichita State University. Yureli Garza, $275,168, and her major is undecided. Ivan Gallegos, $244,696, and plans to attend Newman University. Emily Jensen, like, oh my goodness, I'm sorry. Emily Jessen Thelenegy, $227,000, and plans to attend Friends University. Alexa Almeida, $222,000, and she plans to attend Wichita State University. Hugo Alvarez, $212,000, and plans to attend Wichita State University. Edgar Lopez, $169,388, and plans to attend Baker University. Guadalupe Urbina Montez, $161,787, plans to attend Fort Hays State University. And finally, Lily Lee, $160,000, and she plans to attend Fort Hays State University.
Okay, next up, we have Northeast Magnet, and we have our principal, we have Ben Myrie.
And then we'll also have them come right up to the front.
From Northeast Magnet High School, our scholars, Dreiden Bell, attending University of Alabama, Convi Ta, who is undecided, Amari Williams, who is here tonight, considering the University of Pittsburgh, Alex Gleason, also here this evening, will be attending University of Oklahoma, Christian Schmidt, Abby Gearing, who is here this evening, Cotty College will be her destination, Tamara Butler, Sasha Keane, Emily Kim, here this evening, will attend UMKC, Isabella Torres, and Annika Vanover. Our 10 scholars earned right at about $3.5 million worth of scholarships, so congratulations.
Okay, next up, we have Northwest High School, and we have Eric Hofer-Holdeman, the principal.
Good evening. Unfortunately, none of our Northwest students could make it this evening, but I hope their absence does not in any way diminish their outstanding accomplishments. Our scholarship winners are Jeremiah Moore, attending Navy, Kaia Stuckey, attending Fort Hays State, Desland Cooper, also attending Navy, Jason Palone, attending Wichita State University, Kylie Robertson, attending the University of Texas, Alexandria Butler, attending the University of Washington, Shelby Beckman is going to Friends University here in town, Amy Nunez at William Jewel, and Daniel Fritsch at Wichita State University, and Jerome Reagan attending William Jewel. Our total of scholarships, $4.6 million. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have South High, and we have Principal Travis Rogers.
Thank you. Our top 10 scholarship winners for South High, Esteban Velasco, who will be attending Notre Dame University, Tiffany Tran, who will be attending Friends University, Amy Nguyen will be attending Wichita State, Javon Lipsy will be attending Colorado College, Amario Landrum will be attending McPherson College, Carlos Sosa will be attending Wichita State University, Truk Do, undecided, Brooklyn Lot, undecided, Delilah Sherbin, Baker University, Jocelyn Cardona, Friends University, Trenasia Nadali will be at Pitt State University, and Anaya Pitts at Baker University.
Good job, Carlos. Good job.
Okay, next up is Southeast High School, with Principal Ben Mitchell.
Well, good evening, Board members and district officials. Again, my name is Ben Mitchell, proud principal of Southeast High School, home of the Golden Buffaloes. And my scholarship nominees are Annabelle Merton, University of Kansas, Donovan Powell, Wichita State University, Elizabeth Husser, Whitworth University, if you don't know where that is, Spokane, Washington, Joel Underwood, Army National Guard, Judy Nguyen, Friends University, Kylie Columbo, Butler Community College, Kevin Fernandez, Friends University, Maheshba Purvin, the University of Kansas, Marisol Gallegos, Haskell Indian Nations University, and she's going to enlist in the Navy, Pamela Delora, Hutchinson Community College, Penelope Johnson, Southeastern Community College, that's in Iowa, if you didn't know, Priska Bahati, Newman University, Rosaleen Martinez, Newman University, Rosaleen just gave me that look, Rosalyn Martinez, Newman University, and last but not least, Xavion Evans, Bethany College.
Okay, our last high school that we're going to recognize this evening is West High, and we have Principal Mark Jolliffe.
Good evening, Board members, and our fabulous students, Mark Jolliffe, myself, that's me, Mark Jolliffe, myself, yes, at West High School, proud of our students, and we will list them accordingly. Zefran Jeter, Newman University, Matthew Arteya, Newman University, David Lopez, Tabor College, Kayla Cruz, Wichita State, Natalia Lopez, Newman University, Austin Huff, good job, Austin, Wichita State University, Roberto Maldonado Flores, Wichita State University, Kim Rader, Newman University, Pedro Garcia, K-State, and Jonah Burton, Wichita State.
All right, can we do one last round of applause to recognize all of these students for our job? Great, well done. Mr. Reeser, did you have any comments or questions?
I tell you, we know that this... I apologize, it's an emotional moment. We know this is a community effort to get you to this point, and we will always hold you dear in our heart, and we are so proud of you. So good luck in the future, and we'll see you at the graduation.
Families, we do have a couple of other good news items, but if you wanted to go ahead and depart and catch up with your students, you are more than welcome to, but we would always be glad for you to stay as well.
And we'll give a moment for everyone to... Julie, do you want to thank the parents? Julie?
Yeah, thank you all, parents, for coming, and congratulations for your great kids. I'm sure you're all just thrilled to death, and we really appreciate you coming tonight, and so proud of your students.
Thank you, Julie. Yes.
I want to ask Wendy a question.
Diane does?
No, I do.
Ernestine?
Oh, how come that... I clicked, and it's supposed to be me. Wendy, do you know that, can you tell me the data that you just said about how many dollars in scholarships we have? That sort of, my mind went blank, it was so enormous, but say it again, please.
Yes, so the amount that was offered that we know about is 59,673,361.
Wow. Thank you.
I think if the mic would come off, this would be a good mic drop moment.
It would, it definitely would.
I couldn't help but think about the Dr. Seuss book that shows up so frequently this time of year, Oh, the Places They Will Go, and looking at the faces, there were a couple of Super SAC students in the group, and it's so cool to hear stories from our students as they take that next step in their journey, and when we see them come back to us and continue to serve in the community. The figure that stuck with me, Ms. Crable, is that more than 2,500 students are preparing to graduate, and you think about the impact that Wichita Public Schools has on workforce in our community, and even if those students don't stay in town, and I was glad to see there were a lot of shockers in the bunch, we know that kids come back to us as adults and know that Wichita is a great place for families, and we hope it will be a great place for them to live and work in the future, and it will be great to see them coming back to us. So now is an opportunity, shifting gears a little bit, Ms. Kingry talked about how it takes a village to help students get to the point of success, and we have an opportunity in our next item to recognize eight schools in that village. These schools are recipients of the 2021 Challenge Awards based on their state assessment performance last year, and we had the opportunity a month or so ago to go to the schools and congratulate all of the staff that were part of those honors. So I know they're waiting in the wings here, and I am pleased to invite a familiar face to step forward to the podium. Ms. Betty Arnold used to sit in your seat, and now Ms. Betty Arnold sits in Topeka as a member of the Kansas State Board of Education. So she was my partner in crime as we got to visit our schools, and it was just a lot of fun, and it's a special opportunity to have her here so that she can recognize our principals and teaching staff who came to celebrate tonight.
Welcome, Betty. It's good to have you back again.
Thank you, and it's always a pleasure to be here. First of all, good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Deputy Superintendent Alvarez, and the rest of the Board. I used to love sitting there when good news was going on, because there was nothing better than to celebrate USD 259, as you know, which is a district in my heart. But I'll get sidetracked, so I'm going to get started with my purpose for being here this evening. And as you know, there are many challenges... But I'll get sidetracked, so I'm going to get started with my purpose for being here this evening. And as you know, there are many challenges that can interfere, interrupt, undermine, and/or completely halt the learning process for students. Challenges such as socioeconomic status for those taking this test stood out. And the Challenge Award was created by the Confidence in Public Education Task Force, which recognizes Kansas schools that are making a notable difference in student academic achievement despite facing significant challenges in their school population. This award recognizes schools for uncommon accomplishments based on Kansas Assessment Results for the 2021 Math and Reading State Assessment Scores. Now, a little bit of background, only those schools that have a total percentage of free and reduced-priced lunch students above the state average, a 46.14%, are eligible for this recognition. So to have this many schools that met a challenge head-on and defeated that challenge is amazing. And so if I could get Deputy Superintendent Alvarez, President Reeser to come forward. We really want to celebrate what these buildings have done. And I encourage the rest of the board members, if you've not visited these buildings, you should. You should invite your state representatives, invite family, invite friends. Let them know the amazing things that they are doing. And one of the things that I really want to share, because in this population of high-risk students, many of them really don't get that self-affirmation. Something so basic that we take for granted. Students are lacking in that. And when I visited these buildings, I tell you, I just, I was like, let's go back through and do this twice, I'm loving it. I heard them teach students to believe in themselves, just as your vision says, to dream, that they can do it. And I was like, look at Wichita. This is amazing. I could go on and on. I love what they've done. Take the time to visit them, take the time to congratulate them. Because I tell you, what we're doing in Topeka is we are celebrating this accomplishment. So with that being said, the Challenge Award recipients of 2021. We're going to start, oh, okay. We're going to start with Allison Traditional Magnet Middle School Principal Amy Johnson. And congratulations again, and I'm going to do this. I'm their great cheerleader, so if nobody else applauds, I will, I promise you that. Brooke Center for STEM and Arts Magnet Middle School Principal Walter Givens. Mayberry Cultural and Fine Arts Magnet Middle School Principal Christina Murray. And Harshman K-8 Dual Magnet Principal Joel Escopita. Did want to mention, just in case. Franklin Elementary School Principal Suzanne Smith. And teachers. Kinsler Elementary School Principal Chris Waterbury. Lawrence Elementary School Principal Cindy Christman. And Maclean Science and Technology Magnet Elementary School Principal Cindy Graves. Again, my congratulations for a job well done. Thank you all so much.
And State Board Representative Betty Arnold, we appreciate you taking the time to come and help present that to these outstanding schools. And we appreciate your leadership, too.
My pleasure, thank you.
And I must say, I'm very proud of this board. This board does visit schools regularly, and I know each of you are in every schools almost every day. So I really appreciate this board and the effort they're making in that area. Wendy?
Our third good news item tonight allows you to honor cadets who were recently selected to lead our Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. I know that Board Member Kathy Bond and Deputy Superintendent Alvarez had a chance to serve on the Review Committee along with several other community leaders. And Colonel Hester, who leads our JR OTC and Leadership Programs, is here to introduce you to the stellar young people who interviewed and were selected to lead our cadets next year.
All right, Wendy, thank you.
Welcome, Colonel Hester.
Thank you very much, President Reeser, Deputy Superintendent Alvarez, members of the board, it's great to be here. We had an exceptional year this past year in Junior OTC and our leadership programs. We maintained our enrollment of about 2,400 cadets. Our cadets were this year involved in a multitude of activities. Orienting, Raider Team Drill, a number of boards, a Veterans Day Ceremony, and Parade. And our newest activity, Archery. We, in fact, a bus with 24, a bus with 42 cadets arrived back in Wichita at 2:00 yesterday morning from Salt Lake City, where they competed in a national archery competition. And the teams from seven schools did exceptionally well at that competition. So it has been a very good year. Our corps staff has been actively involved in all of our district activities. I've asked Jesse Bartlett to be here with me. Jesse is our, has been our core commander this past year. Jesse has just been a, just, you know, had a lot of energy and has kept the corps staff working diligently and has done a great job. So thanks, Jesse. We had our core selection board to select cadets for next school year. We conducted that on the 9th of March. And in addition to Deputy Superintendent Alvarez and BOE member Bond, Assistant Superintendent Kingry was also a member of the board. And County Commissioner Chair, Colonel David Dennis, was a member. We had seven outstanding cadets that appeared before the board. Three of them are here today, but they're, the cadets appearing was Jacob Ashley from Southeast, Caden Ashley from Southeast, excuse me, Jacob Berry from Heights, Jacob is here. Brian Roybaugh from Northeast Magnet, Alex Ritchie from South, Carol Laura from East, and Isabella Velasquez from North, and Jordan Wilte from Northwest. They all did a great job. Our corps staff for next year, our commander is going to be Carol Laura from East High School as the commander. The deputy corps commander is Jacob Berry from Heights. And Jordan Wilte from Northwest will be our corps sergeant major. And I know we're going to have another great year, and I wanted them to come here and so the board members, you know, could see these outstanding cadets. It's going to be, it's been a good year, and it'll be even better next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colonel Hester.
Last but certainly not least, we have an opportunity to tell you about the name that belongs with the fourth good news item. I'm pleased to invite Fabian Armendaras forward. When we published the board agenda last week, he didn't know he was getting this award yet. And we had the opportunity to surprise him at our District Crisis Team meeting last Thursday with the Excellence in Public Service Award. For those of you new to the board who may not be familiar with this award, this was the 34th year that the DeVore Family Foundation honored a public servant from the city of Wichita, Cedric County, and the Wichita Public Schools. And they started doing this recognition along with a cash prize, if you will, that goes along with it because of their belief in the importance of honoring extraordinary public servants in our community. And I can't help but point out Ms. Hedrick, as she's directly in front of me, who is a previous recipient of the Excellence in Public Service Award when she was on the staff at the Wichita Public Schools. This year, Fabian Armendaras was one of the Wichita Public Schools nominees. And as the selection committee thought about the qualities that you see noted before you, exemplary performance, innovative problem-solving, high ethical standards, involvement in the community, and certainly the final item noted significant contributions towards COVID-19 response in the workplace. I couldn't think of anyone better for this award, which is why I took the opportunity to nominate Fabian. So I'm just a little bit proud of someone that I think is beyond deserving that we were able to set up a surprise and leave him speechless, which I don't see of my friend Fabian very often. I am pleased, President Reeser and Deputy Superintendent Alvarez, if you would please come forward. I would like you to do the honor of presenting this certificate to Fabian and shaking his hand as we honor our 2022 Excellence in Public Service Honorary Fabian Armendaras. Would you like to say anything?
I'm going to get with a chance at a podium now. Truthfully, I, as a Wichita Public Schools lifer, and I, this is my 22nd school year working for the Wichita Public Schools. I'd like to joke and say that I started when I was 10, but yeah, that's not the case at all. I'm just incredibly humbled. I would have never expected to have received this honor, which is, in my opinion, one of the highest honors that we give as a school system. Just because I see the work that our teachers and that our staff do day in and day out. The countless hours that are spent beyond the contractual day to ensure that we do what's in the best interest of our kids. And so I think my work pales in comparison to some of those amazing things that our staff are doing. So I'm incredibly humbled, and I really don't feel worthy in many ways. I do this work not because I believe, not for the recognition, although this is really nice. It is because I believe that we deserve, our kids deserve. The, you know, the many kids that we had here today deserve a more inclusive future. And they, and where everyone has an opportunity to belong. As you saw tonight, we are a majority-minority district. That means that seven out of the 10 seats that occupy our seats look like me, which is pretty humbling to see. And so, again, I, what we, what I hope that we can do is that all of these students that are sitting here that we're recognizing will want to stay in Wichita and will want to contribute to our community in their future, and that we make our city attractive enough for them not to go somewhere else. Because we do a great job of investing in them, but then we lose that investment when we don't have the things that they want to be able to come back. And that's what we should be able to build towards. I want to thank you all for the work that you do and for the support that you do, not only of my division, but of the work of our district and our mission of our district. I want to thank my colleagues, as well as I want to thank my operations team, the WFI Red Shirt family. And if you don't know, we are the only people that are crazy enough to take a week's worth of vacation to go work. So other people go out and they take vacation, they have trips and all those things. We take vacation to go put on the best party that our city can put in. That is, including my friend right here, who got me involved in WFI. And I want to thank you, Wendy. She's not only been a friend of mine, she's been a mentor. My second year in the district, I was fortunate enough to be called to do some Spanish outreach work. And I remember meeting Wendy at the old Rubens back when he was at the gas station. And we brainstormed about the dreams that we had about this communication plan. And to see it come to fruition with Maria being a part of this team is pretty, is pretty cool. And last, I want to thank my family, and I, Matt, I know you put up with a lot, sometimes wondering why I'm out late at night and coming in so late. So I'm just incredibly blessed. Again, our students are a Y, and if nothing else will motivate us to do the work that needs to be done, it is these faces that were here tonight, which is a great night for this to happen. So thank you all, thank you for your support, and again, I'm just incredibly humbled and feel incredibly blessed.
And Fabian, you are worthy of this award. I don't know if the public noticed, but he brought his work computer down to the podium with him. He, while we were giving out this award, he answered four emails, rerouted 34 bus routes, ordered 6,000 P&amp;J sandwiches, and was checking the weather for us. So we appreciate everything you do. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
Next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Brent.
Thank you, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Deputy Superintendent Alvarez, members of the board. I second what Fabian said about all the seniors who are here tonight. It's always incredibly difficult this time of year as we're trying to sacrifice and do all the things it takes to help people get across that stage. And, you know, it's a tremendous honor to walk across that stage and receive that diploma and step forward into the future. And when I was that age, I did not understand or appreciate the sacrifices teachers made on our behalf. And now I do. And I just want to celebrate today my colleagues who, day in and day out, give everything they've got. Because you just can't be successful in this job if you don't. And the incredible time and commitment and heart it takes to work with the young people in our community and to see them through the challenges and struggles so that they see the success that lies ahead of them as well. So thank you all for your support of our Wichita teachers.
Thank you, Brent. I think that summarized our good news perfectly tonight, so thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Public Communications.
No one has signed up tonight, so next item, Patrick.
Next item, under Education, District Mental Health Initiatives.
We thank Hazel Stabler for this, initiating this conversation tonight. Thank you, Hazel. She had a request that we get a overview of our district mental health initiatives. So tonight, we have a presentation about those services, and it's for the information. So tonight, we have a presentation about those services and it's for the information for the board and for the public. Gil?
Thank you President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, members of the board. Tonight, good evening. I am superintendent, or excuse me, Deputy Superintendent Gil Alvarez, don't want to fool myself, sorry. And with me this evening are my co-presenters, Vince Evans, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, Sean Hudson, sit next to me, Chief Human Resource Officer, and Terry Moses, Division Director of Safety and Environmental Sciences. Tonight, we will present on our district's mental health supports for students and staff. This presentation is in response to Board Member Hazel Stabler's request, as President Reeser shared, on what initiatives or programs do we have to support mental health issues for our students and staff. We acknowledge and understand how the pandemic has impacted our students and community around mental health through feedback we have received from both employees and students. This is why we responded with the following supports you see on the slide. As you can see, we have multiple supports in place that help our staff and students with mental health concerns. We will go deeper into each of these mental health supports and Vince will get us started with the supports we provide to our students. Vince?
Good evening, board members. I know that we've had multiple people claim to be the superintendent and deputy superintendent tonight, but I am quite positive that I am the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services. This is a very timely presentation. I don't know if you know this, but this is Mental Health Awareness Month, so a very happy Mental Health Awareness Month to all of you. Tonight, I have three different items to share with you. The first one is going to be our Mental Health Intervention Team. And for those of you that have been on the board for a while, you've heard about this topic before. And for those of you that are new to the board, this might be the first time hearing about this. It's also known as the Kansas Opportunity Support Program. And you can see the objective there. It's to eliminate barriers for students and families who need clinical therapy and access to the services of their community mental health centers. And that, that's a very long description. So I would ask you, what, what does that mean? And here's the simple version that I would say about that. I think back to when I was a school principal, and sometimes we had students where we simply struggled to meet their mental health needs within the school. They needed higher level of support. So that's where we would reach out and work with some of our local organizations like Calm Care or the Mental Health Association by putting parents in touch with those types of organizations. Keep in mind, when you're talking about an organization like that, that's something that a parent very much has to, to sign off on and be a part of and give their consent before they're going to work with an organization like that. But when I was a principal, sometimes we would identify that, the parents would want that, the parents would sign off on that, and they'd come to an agreement about, here's when we're going to go to Calm Care, here's what time, here's what days of the week. But then something would happen that would create an access issue. For instance, we didn't have gas in the car, the car broke down, the shifts at work changed, so we can't go at the same time that we were planning on. Access issues. And I always thought, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could eliminate those? And that's exactly what this program does. And it does that by taking those organizations and inviting them into our schools. Tell you a bit more about that in these coming slides. All right, before we move on, I do want to make sure and point out some thanks as well, because we have had some people that have been extremely supportive in getting this program off the ground. First one is our very own State Representative Brenda Landware, and she has been a champion for this program since the very beginning, which is back in 2018, when the Kansas Legislature approved it. And we have been a part of this since 2018. We were one of the very first districts to sign on. And I'd also, while I'm thinking about it, because she's here tonight, like to thank my friend Melissa Zimmerman. She's our Behavior Director and she oversees this programming, so extremely thankful for her. Now, as for the actual Mental Health Intervention Team program, currently it has 691 students that are being served in our building. So again, we have agencies like Calm Care, and you can see them listed there, the Mental Health Association, and the Kansas Children's Service League, that we have given office space in our buildings. And if that level of need is there, and if parents sign off and say, yes, I very much want these services, they are seeing them right there on site. And that's funded, thanks again, to the Kansas State Legislature by a state grant, and we also contribute some general fund money and ESER dollars as well. There are different job responsibilities for each of these people. When I think about those community mental health centers like your Calm Cares, they do things such as case management, which involves a lot of one-on-one work with a student and their families. Oftentimes, it takes place even within the home. And we do, as I mentioned, onsite therapy at the school. We don't do it, they do it. And they also provide medical management. That's not something that our school nurses would get into, for example. That's between medical providers and agencies like this and parents. Those are their decisions to make. As for Wichita Public Schools, the positions that we have that work in this program are called Behavioral Health School Liaisons. And they work on things like reducing those barriers to access, so making people aware of this programming, helping to coordinate communication so parents can decide if they want to get signed up. And they also work on improving academics, behavior, and attendance for these students that are participating in these programs. I do want to point out that we're very thankful that we have those ESER dollars, because that's allowed us to add 10 new Behavioral Health School Liaisons to this program. Right? Is the program working? That, that's a crucial question here, right? Well, the answer is yes. The state asks us to report on three different factors. KSDE wants to know, are we improving attendance? Are we improving behavior? And are we improving academics? And the answer to all three of those is yes. Our folks that are working in these programs have to go through and say, are they improving? Are we not sure yet because we don't have enough data? Or are their scores actually decreasing? And you can see there, we have increases in all three of those categories. The second item that I wanted to talk to you about tonight is our new Mental Health Matters webpage. Some of you might have remembered that I introduced this in December. That was the very first time that we launched it. We launched it on the day of the December board meeting. And anybody's welcome to log on. Check this out at usd259.org/mentalhealth. The reason this webpage exists is because it was driven by feedback from our students, our staff, and our parents. When we put out a survey last year, and you know how sometimes you put out a survey and you don't get a great response to it? This was like the best response we'd ever had. We had 18,500 responses when we asked the students, the staff, and the parents, what should our priorities be for the 2021-22 school year? And they came back overwhelmingly, one of those big ticket items, and said, we need more support for mental health. So this is one of the things we did, was we created a webpage. And that webpage has both resources that are available at school for mental health, as well as resources that are available in the community for mental health. And the question that should be on your mind, I think, is are people actually using this resource? So Mr. Alvarez will go to the next slide. You can see, absolutely, they are. Since that December meeting, we have had nearly 3,000 visits to that webpage. And that data is accurate as of late April, so it's even a little bit higher today than it reflects right there. Final thing that I want to talk about tonight is our counselors, our social workers, and our psychologists. These folks, they often fly under the radar, but I'm here to tell you, they are absolutely key when it comes to supporting the mental health of our students. There's a number of different bullet points up there with assorted information. The key points are, again, they are key players in this work. They serve both special education and general education students. And they can provide either consistent services or even just a boost for a one-time need. On the next slide, we see that when we're talking about numbers, there are currently 4,400 students with IEPs in this district that are receiving regular support from either a counselor, a social worker, and/or a psychologist. We also track our mental health check-ins for students around the district. And this year, our social workers, our psychologists, and our counselors have provided over 60,000 of those check-ins to work with our students. Some additional information on this topic, I do want to make sure to point out again that we're extremely thankful for that ESER funding, because when you look at adding on new FTEs, full-time equivalency for staff members, we've managed to add on three social workers, two psychologists, and 16 counselors through that funding. And I also want to make sure to send my thanks to some friends that I have here this evening. I've got one that couldn't make it, that's Dr. Holly Jaeger. She is finishing up a class tonight for a new certification that she is adding to her license. And she leads our psychologists. But I also have Ms. Stephanie Anderson, who leads our counselors, and Hillary Trudeau, who leads our social workers. Extremely thankful for them and their teams and everything that they do for our students. And with that, we're going to keep right moving along, and I'm going to pass the mic over to my friend Terry Moses.
Thank you Vince. Terry Moses, Director of Safety and Environmental Services. Big part of safety, of course, is student safety. And I'm here to talk about three things also. The first one is suicide prevention. Suicide unfortunately is a big part of our communities, our lives, and it's something that we all have to deal with. What Vince just talked about is a big part of what we do to help students that are dealing with depression and issues like suicidal ideation. What we do in USD 259, one of the things is the Jason Flatt Act. It was passed in 2016 as a part of the Kansas Legislature. And it mandates that all school district employees receive at least one hour of suicide awareness training and prevention annually. And Vince just introduced the ladies up at the top. Those folks, as well as safety services, we work every year to create new information and new content in regards to that suicide prevention training. That logo that you see right there is our thought process in regards to suicide prevention. It's kind of like stop, drop, and roll. We want everybody to think stay, listen, and get help. In other words, if you have somebody who is talking about suicidal ideation, stay with them, listen to them, and make sure you get help. Something easy that people can understand and remember in the case of a crisis. Our completed suicides, unfortunately, we have lost students via suicide. I gave you this information earlier this year, and you can see that our, our numbers remain unfortunately very stable. And so far in the 21-22 school year, we have unfortunately have lost two students via suicide. One of the things that we have done as a part of this education process is we reached out to our students, as well as our TV production staff. And we know that one of the best ways that you can get people to pay attention when you're trying to send a message is to do it visually, and that is with storytelling. And also, when you're dealing with students and even staff, is to hear it from students themselves. So we have a three-minute video that we're going to show you that we've included as a part of our suiciding training for the last several years.
I have my highs and lows, just like anyone else.
Some days my lows are really low.
Things can be hard to figure out.
Sometimes I just don't feel like talking to people.
Lately, I've been acting differently.
Acting really down, crying all the time.
Getting really irritated.
Shutting my friends out.
Giving my stuff away.
Suddenly not doing stuff that I used to love.
Acting restless, drinking, doing drugs, staying out late.
Or doing stuff that's just not like me.
It might be nothing to worry about.
Or it might be something more. I might be depressed.
Not just feeling down, depressed, really depressed.
It might be that I'm thinking about killing myself.
It happens more than you think, more than it should.
People often say I had no idea.
I thought it was just a phase.
I never thought she would actually do it.
I wish he had talked to me.
I wish he had told someone.
I wish I had asked.
If you think I'm not acting like I usually do, say something.
Ask me what's wrong.
Ask me directly, are you thinking about killing yourself?
When people are thinking about killing themselves, they want somebody to ask.
They want somebody to care.
You might think asking about it might put the idea in their head, but actually, it'll help.
It never hurts to ask.
In fact, the best way to keep someone from killing themselves is to ask, are you thinking about killing yourself?
And what if they say yes?
Or maybe.
Or sometimes.
Well, here's what you don't say.
Don't be crazy.
You're such a drama queen.
Nobody's worth killing themselves over.
What's this going to solve?
You're just trying to get attention.
You won't really kill yourself.
You're making a big deal out of nothing.
If people say that they've been thinking about killing themselves, what you can say
is, I'm sorry you've been feeling that way.
I'm here for you. I'll stay with you, and we'll get to this together.
You're important to me, and I want to keep you safe.
A lot of people think about killing themselves.
Most of them never try it, but some do. So if someone says...
I wish I were dead.
I just can't go on any longer.
You'd be better off without me.
I'm going to kill myself.
Take me seriously.
Stay with me.
Listen to me.
Help me find someone I can talk to, someone who can help.
Sometimes people think about killing themselves because of something that has happened in their life.
I flunked my math test.
My girlfriend broke up with me.
My parents are getting a divorce.
I wrecked my car.
Sometimes I feel like it'll never get better.
Get some help, talk to someone.
I need someone I could turn to, someone I could trust.
A teacher, a coach, a counselor, a minister.
Just don't let it drop.
Help them make a list of names of trusted people they could talk to.
Write down the suicide hotline number.
Be sure your home is safe.
If you have pills that they can use to hurt themselves, lock them up.
If you have a gun, don't just lock it up, get it out of the house.
And one more thing, don't leave them alone.
Call 911 if you have to.
Everyone has highs and lows, but sometimes it's more than that.
If you think something's wrong, the only way to find out is to ask.
Ask them directly, are you thinking about killing yourself?
It could make all the difference.
Even if you feel hopeless, there's still hope.
No one is perfect. Sometimes life can be overwhelming.
People can and do recover from even the lowest and most frightening places a mind can go.
Hope and caring are powerful gifts we can give each other.
It can make all the difference in relieving pain and saving lives.
Stay.
Listen.
We think that's a very powerful message that we use to educate our staff and students when they ask about situations like suicidal ideation. And again, a big thank you to our drama department that we worked with and strategic communications as we put that together in order to train people about what to look for and to get that message, stay, listen, and get, get help, as you heard that several times throughout the video. In terms of our response, we have a suicide risk assessment process. A couple of years ago, we started using the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale. That is what is used in many hospital emergency rooms to determine how serious someone is about suicide ideation. We also include parent notification, we include a parent package with suicide warning signs, and if necessary, if it is a high-level risk, we have a suicide behavior safety plan that we set up. So these are the things that we do in regards to suicide prevention. We also keep track of the numbers. Next slide, Gil. When we started this process way back in 2016, we started keeping track. And when you look at that bottom total, the first year that we put these numbers out, people said, that's high. We've got almost 1,500 students that have some sort of suicide ideation. And to me, I said, thank goodness that's high, because that means we have staff that are paying attention and listening to these kids and reporting it and getting them services and help. And as you can see, we put an asterisk by the 1920 and 2021 school years because we did have, due to COVID, extreme reduction in the amount of contact we had with students in those years. And we don't have the numbers yet for the 2021-22 school year. Another initiative that we've taken part in is called Zero Reasons Why. Johnson County in Kansas in 2018 worked with a community, a community group was established because they saw an increase in teen suicides in Johnson County. And they had a program that was led by students, and the students created the name for this program, Zero Reasons Why. They feel like it's been successful in getting information out to the community, and the students are very empowered because it is led by students. In 2021, it was adopted by Sedgwick County. Sedgwick County used their COVID response money, goes by a different name, I believe it's ARPA for Sedgwick County, to bring Zero Reasons Why to Sedgwick County. It belongs, it involves healthcare professionals, mental health clinicians, elected officials, schoolteachers, students, parents, to share their stories about mental health crisis and recovery. The timeline for us is we started in 2021, it was introduced to Sedgwick County, there was an official launch late in 2021, and then so far this year, they've had student orientation and just a couple of months ago, and actually a month ago in March, they had the first ICT or Wichita Teen Council meeting. And then May of 2020, they have a scheduled kickoff filming event for Zero Reasons Why here in Sedgwick County. And the final thing I want to talk to you about is called Mental Health First Aid, and especially youth mental health first aid. Those of us that are involved in just safety, general safety for years are very familiar with first aid. And the bottom line is every single person should be trained in basic first aid. In other words, what do we need to do to keep somebody safe until we can either take care of the problem or get them to the next step? Whether they need an ambulance or they need... need to be taken to a hospital, or they need a doctor? And this is the same basic idea with mental health first aid. This program was started in Australia, and then it was moved to the United States. And it is designed to recognize those signs and symptoms that suggest a mental health challenge. And the example I would give you with regular first aid, we know the signs and symptoms of a stroke. Sometimes they can be very hard to see, but to other people, they're very obvious. And we need, we know we need to take help or take action to get somebody help when they're having a stroke. The idea behind youth mental health first aid is to recognize those signs and symptoms so we can either help them by getting to them to one of the many people that Vince talked about, or do we need to get them to the next level of care, an emergency room, something like that. Youth mental health first aid, I'm sorry, it was faster than me, go back to there, your... Youth mental health first aid also is designed to listen, not judgmentally, give reinsurance to the youth. And then, of course, the most important thing is refer the youth to the appropriate professional services. How did we fund this? We actually started this process before the ESAR funding, and we applied for a grant with the STOP Grant, which is the Stop School Violence Grant. And in October of 2020, we received money that allowed us to have four people from Wichita Public Schools go to training. It was virtual training because it was done in the middle of COVID, but to become youth mental health first aid trainers. And so far, Vince, you can move, Vince, Gil, you can move forward. During the 21-22 school year so far, we've trained our school resource officers, many of our social workers, behavior health school liaisons, our behavior intervention specialists, counselors, psychologists, and security officers. So those are the programs that I have to provide you with information about this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince and Terry. Our district has a screener called SABERS, which stands for Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener, and is a measure used to identify students that may need mental health and/or social emotional supports. The SABERS screener is completed by teachers in grades K-12 twice per year in October and February, and the MYSABERS is completed by students three times a year, third grade through 12th grades. Students completed MYSABERS when school began in August so that staff could immediately check in on students and not wait until teachers completed the SABERS in October. Students participate again in February and May to determine the impact of our social emotional character development interventions, or to see if students need to talk to a trusted adult or even a therapist. This is the first full year the district has used SABERS in grades K-12. Let's look at some SABERS data for this particular school year. You're looking at the percent of students that were at risk in the fall versus in the winter. Third graders showed around a 33% at risk in the fall, but decreased to around 27% at risk in the winter. However, all other grades from fourth to 12th grade showed a slight to moderate increase from fall to winter. This data allows us to see which students have some risk or high risk, and allows us to put supports in place or interventions for our students, like refer them to our social workers, school psychologists, counselors, or therapists in order to meet the individual needs of our students. In addition, I can tell you that, as you saw in our Super-SupersAC dialogue feedback, and also what we've heard from students in our final Supersac meeting of the year, the student-led mental health awareness conference a month ago, and through conversations in our schools, students want and need the mental health resources we are providing to them. Whether their needs rise to the level of intervention that the SABERS screener might point out, or whether it's a student needing someone to talk to, to process a difficult issue they're facing in class, or with a peer. Students recognize that mental health is as important as physical health. We will continue to use student feedback as we plan this summer and fall to assure that we're letting students know about the vast body of resources we have available to them. I will now turn it over to Sean Hutzspeth to share how we support our employees.
Thanks, Gil. Again, Sean Hutzspeth, Chief Human Resources Officer. You know, I couldn't support and get behind this EAP program each and every day if it weren't for the fine staff that I have. And I need to recognize two women that work for me that are just outstanding in supporting this program. That is my benefits manager, Danielle Detmer, and supervisor Bonnie Burkhardt. They are just absolutely phenomenal when it comes to getting the message out to our staff because we need to take care of our people. So last year, we were able to move to a new EAP provider, Employee Assistance Plan is what EAP stands for, and we elected to go with ComPsych. We went with ComPsych because they are the world's largest provider of employee EAP programs. They serve a lot of major school districts nationwide with access to resources that are specifically designed for educators. And the other reason was it was very customized to fit our needs, and I'll tell you how on the next slide. In their selection of services, they provide confidential emotional support, things like anxiety, depression, stress, grief loss, life adjustments, relationship and marital conflicts. They also provide solutions in the areas of work-life, which means finding child and elder care, housing assistance, moving, home repair contractors. Believe it or not, they have a concierge service that will actually go find a gift for your spouse if you need one. I haven't tried that yet, but Mother's Day is around the corner. Interactive digital tools, MYSTRENGTH, very self-guided programs on anxiety, chronic pain, opioid, depression, and other types of drug use. They provide legal guidance in the areas of divorce, folks that are looking to adopt, family law, putting together a will, a trust, or even an estate plan. Need representation? They give you a 30-minute free consultation at a 25% reduced fee than what a normal pick-up-the-phone-and-call-an-attorney would charge. Finally, in the area of financial resources, they will also supplement us in the areas of retirement planning, such as long-term things like taxes, relocation, mortgage insurance, budgeting, debt, and bankruptcy. And I am happy to say that we have had employees share with us that they have cut up credit cards and got rid of debt in the amount of just over $2 million. Next slide, please. Online toolkits and resource centers, these are the ones that we found in our most recent report that they have drilled down into. So we have people accessing the Teacher Resource Guide for stress management, paying back student loans, building resilience in children and helping them cope with stress, crises, encouraging tolerance and acceptance in children, and handling bullies in school. Most notably, we've seen a lot of hits on the Ukrainian Crisis Resource Center, how to cope with conflict, teaching our children dealing and seeing things on the news about war, political discord, and emotions. Manager supervisors assisting employees dealing with personnel issues or personal issues at home or work, and promoting a healthier, more productive workforce. Mental health and wellness was the fourth area, referred tools and resources to help reduce the stigma around mental health and encouraging appropriate self-care. The last area was on diversity and inclusion. It was the importance of embracing individual differences by recognizing everyone's unique contributions, showing sensitivity to cultural backgrounds, native languages, social practices of all those that are around us each and every day. With the ESAR dollars and because of what this board approved for us last year, we were able to do three buy-up programs that are normally not a part of a standard package. We did purchase the MYSTRENGTH program. That is the self-guided program on anxiety, chronic pain, opioid, other pain use, depression, mindfulness, sleep, stress, substance abuse, and much more. Finally, we also got to look at personalized resources on physical health conditions, including things that have a direct impact on other benefits, such as our health plan, like smoking, diabetes, and heart disease. The CCBT is the Computer-Based Cognitive Behavior Therapy, which focuses on providing support in areas specified by the individual that they can do right over their phone with a live doctor or clinician. Finally, Wealth Source, that's not a typo, it's spelled that way. But this is personalized online financial wellness programs, planning tools to assist employees just in living healthier financial lives and reducing stress regarding bills or whatever else they may have mounting. Focuses on personalized debt management, budget planning, and we've had a lot of people complete their own personal wills and estate plans as a result of that. Through your generosity and the funds of ESAR, we were able to also increase the number of standardized sessions that went from six to 10, 10 visits per incident and per employee. That includes their spouses, their dependents, and any other household members. They can do it in person, they can do it by phone, via computer, or they can do a customized experience in any combination of those areas. When it comes down to monitoring for success, we looked at ComPsych and compared it to New Directions, which is our former EAP provider. And as you'll see, in the third and fourth quarters of 2021 and going back to 2020, we've seen a sharp increase. With ComPsych in quarter 2021, three and four, 893 employees accessing services, 889 accessing services, as compared just to the quarter before, 205 and 401. Where we're seeing the top services accessed are in the areas of counseling at 53%, family sources at 20%, and the Legal Connect program at just at 14%. The district health insurance is also another good program. The EAP is a free option for short-term issues, but options with longer periods of support do exist within our health insurance program and the two plans that we offer as part of our employee health offerings through the district. Copays for mental health providers match those of a regular office visit copay. We were able to negotiate with our providers that they are not to exceed the $30 and are not charged at the specialty copay cost of $50 per visit, should they need it. I will now turn it back over to Mr. Alvarez to conclude our presentation.
Thank you, Sean. In conclusion, our current mental health and social emotional supports connect to our strategic plan goal number four, schools trusted as safe places. Our indicator of success is to increase skills and competencies for staff and students to experience academic, career, and personal success. We believe by putting these programs and initiatives in place has helped our staff and students succeed as we work our way out of the pandemic. We'd be happy now to answer any questions from the board at this time.
Yeah, this is a very nice presentation. Thank you very much. It's great to see all these services and the results that, the data results that you've collected. What my question is, is at several points, and I made several notes, the 10 new positions, the behavioral health school liaison folks, I won't list them all, but I made notes as you went through that ESAR monies were doing these things. And I saw another place where a grant had been, the STOP Grant was received to take care of another piece of it. And what my concern is, or what my question is, is when ESAR monies stop and when this grant stops, are we hoping that since it'll be post-pandemic that the need won't be as great? Or is it then going to be up to the responsibility of the general budget to take over these services? Just what are the thoughts there?
I know when we first started and provided the surveys and got feedback from our staff and even students through the Supersac, we knew that mental health was one of the areas. So we were going to initially put, that was one of the big areas, was mental health. So that's why we created and put a lot of that in here. Obviously, as ESAR ends, we are going to have to reevaluate and look at what can we continue to do, because we're not going to have additional money to be able to do all the programs that were taken out of ESAR funds. So that means some of the programs may have to stop because of the money being gone from ESAR funds. But that's something that we're going to have to continue to reevaluate to see if we can continue with some of these services. But we do hope that the short time that we've had the ESAR funds, that we are meeting the needs of all the individual staff members, meeting the needs of all the individual students, because the whole purpose was to help us get out of the pandemic from what the needs are. But we'll continue to evaluate and see if we can continue to continue this on after ESAR. I don't know if anybody else had any additional comments.
Hazel?
I was just, in regards to the STOP Grant, the money that we applied for was to get staff trained. And now that we have staff trained, the only additional cost is for a small amount of money for materials as a part of the program. So fortunately for that grant, it was to train trainers. And so, and that grant, when it goes away, will not have a significant effect on our budget. Thank you.
Hazel?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for this report. It's very good. I really...
Your mic's not on.
Good grief. Okay, thank you. So you said that this was in 37 buildings, and how did you decide which buildings would receive the onsite care? And is it as needed? Or, and do you anticipate putting it into more schools? I noticed you added 13 this year.
Ms. Stabler, that's a great question. You're correct. We moved from 24 to 37 schools this year. We continue to ramp that up year after year. I wasn't here when the program initially started, that was just a bit before my time, but originally, there was some thoughts about putting it mainly in our title schools. Since then, we tried to adjust and put it in the schools simply where we feel that there is the greatest level of need and where staff are seeing the greatest number of issues with, again, academics and behavior, and which one am I forgetting? Attendance, sorry. So there is a lot of subjectivity that comes to it at this point in time. But those are the defining criteria that we're looking at. As for whether we would like to look at more schools, we've built on it every year. We would like to continue to move up, but as Mr. Alvarez just alluded to, there's always financial implications to consider as well.
Okay. My next question has to do with the suicide prevention results, and it notes here that the statistics dropped in 2019 to 2021. Are those numbers low because of the kids not being in school and there wasn't an opportunity to track them, when in fact, those could be higher, those numbers could be higher?
Yes, ma'am. That's why there's an asterisk on that, is because that is that one-on-one interaction that we really focus on. And when kids were remote, we know that interaction was not happening. And I think nationwide, you saw any school district that was tracking those kind of interactions or referrals in regards to mental health went down because the lack of personal interaction.
Okay, thank you. All of these services that you give to our teachers and our staff, it's wonderful. There's a lot there. How do you advertise this, these opportunities to teachers? And are they like continually being reminded? Because I know maybe one week they don't need it, and the next week they might need it, but they forgot about it.
Right, out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah.
So we do a lot of things. In fact, the Wellness Department, the main newsletter just went out today. So it is there for every month. We've done direct marketing campaigns where we've mailed postcards to their homes. We have done campaigns where we've put mailbox stuffers at each individual school in their box. They also have the website that they can go to. We have the personalized website. And ComPsych even has their own app that you can download to your phone, so you have access to those resources for all of 259. So when you call or you get on with them, they answer the phone, USD 259 Wichita Public Schools, this is ComPsych. So we have 12 dedicated operators just for our school 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, and it is completely confidential?
It is completely confidential. We receive no other feedback from them and no reports other than just what we would like to know as far as utilization is concerned.
Okay. Let me see, I think that's what I have for right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hazel. Any other questions or comments?
I do.
Okay, Cheryl?
I'm sorry, my computer's not working. I have two questions. One is on Slide eight, and it's where you talk about the results, and those are excellent results for the short amount of time. results for the short amount of time that we've been doing some of these programs. But my question is, how do we follow up with the students who didn't improve? Because we have 72, 64, and 60%, which is very high, but it still leaves 40% of our kids or whomever that didn't make improvements. How do we follow up with them?
Ms. Logan, that is a fantastic question. I'm going to call on my friend Melissa Zimmerman to help me out with that. One thing that I would caution on that data is, again, these are three criteria that KSD asked for in our reporting purposes, but just because you see that there are 28% that are opposite of that 72, correct? There's those that improved, those that we don't have enough evidence to make the judgment yet, and then those that declined. So it doesn't mean it's a full 28% that are in declining. But there are some, and I think that my friend here can tell you how we support them.
Here, you drop that. So we have those behavioral.
I think I'll have you state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've never done this before. I'm a little nervous, guys.
I was going to say, welcome.
So I'm Melissa Zimmerman. I'm the Director of Behavior for Student Support Services. And I've had the privilege of getting to work with this program pretty hands-on for the last three years. So when we have kids that may not qualify, or for some reason, parents do not want them to be necessarily part of this program, our Behavior Health School liaisons will regularly meet with these kiddos and sometimes pull them in for like lunch group or girl pal or whatever to do groups with like peers that might be struggling with some of the same issues. So it's pretty cool that we have that staff that's able to do that as part of the student school day, even if they don't qualify for this program. Does that answer your question?
That helps, yes. Thank you. We're doing something, is what I wanted to hear you say, and you are.
Absolutely.
Then one other thing that I can say, stay right here, friend. You're too good to go away. Ms. Logan, just like any of our other students, if something isn't working, we don't just stop and give up. We meet again, we figure out why it isn't working, and then we figure out what we're going to do to adjust.
Very good, thank you. My second question is your slide 12, and it talks about the numbers of students, the 4,400 students who receive support through their IEPs, that's our special ed kids. But then the number below that is 60,000 plus. That's quite impressive. How did we come up with that number?
That's an excellent question. We actually have a new resource that was developed in-house that we're using this year. We call that our check-in app. So that 60,000 could be anybody from the student body, just to clarify as well. That could be a general education student or a special education student. But anytime that a social worker, counselor, or psychologist goes to do one of those mental health check-ins, they will categorize what the appointment was about, and then it funnels into our database so we know exactly how many of them are occurring, how many check-ins a student has, which might indicate that they need a higher level of support, and we can categorize them by school and however else we would want to filter them.
Yeah, because that was my follow-up question with 60,000. Obviously, we have 47,000 kids. So we've got kids in that number that are repeat students multiple times. And, you know, that's where I think we want to begin to look carefully at the data to find out, because special ed kids have an IEP and have people checking on them regularly. It's our general ed kids that don't. And so I am pleased to see that someone is paying attention and checking in with those students on somewhat of a regular basis. So thank you. Excellent report. I very much appreciate all your effort to bring this to us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hazel?
I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
When the students ask for help, how do they know they can ask for help? And what is the procedure that they go through? And is there a timely manner that they're seen? Like, is there a waiting list? Or do they have immediate support? Or how does that work?
I would say it happens in a variety of ways. I'm going to have a couple more professionals come on down here to expand upon this one. They need some screen time as well. I promise, they deserve it. They're exceptional. The timeliness is critical, especially when we're talking about mental health, right? So I think that my friend Stephanie Anderson here, who leads our counselors, can expand upon how they make sure that happens in a timely fashion.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Anderson. The counselors, the social workers, the psychologists are all visceral. They are present in the hallways. They've got eyes on kids. So they are noticing things. Many of our schools have created a QR code so that students can automatically, like, you know, do the QR code and say, I need to see a counselor. With every single student having an email address, that's how a lot of the counselors, the psychs, and the social workers are connecting with students. I need to come see you. Will you please get me third hour? Will you? And so that's how that communication is happening. But the numbers that were so low when we weren't in school and the kids weren't there, it's because we weren't standing in the hallway watching them, seeing them, like, oh, hey, I want to talk to you later this afternoon or whatever. So that's what's happening now, is we've got our eyes back on the kids and we can see and make ourselves visual and known.
So the point from the day that they ask, what I'm asking is, the day that they request help, does it happen that day?
Typically, unless it's at like 2:55.
Okay.
But many of them, I mean, if they need it, we've got staff that stay way late after school.
And what about the schools that don't have the resources in their schools and they have a child of need in their school? And the resources are not available in that school?
I just want to clarify on that one because I don't want to give anybody the false impression that when we're talking about the 34 schools that have the mental health intervention team, that the other schools don't have support of any kind. They all, all 90 of our schools are represented by a full child study team. And I'll let you talk more about who's on that child study team and how that works. But that's just an extra layer of support at those 34 schools, and we're talking about that clinical element. Stephanie, can you talk a bit more about who's on a child study team at all of our schools?
So every single school has a full child study team of a counselor, a nurse, a social worker, a school psychologist, and a speech pathologist. That's all of our support staff members that meet regularly every single week in the building. Then in addition to that, is an administrator.
Okay.
Thank you.
I noticed that you've got it written here, and I've known that Brenda Landwehr, she's representative, right, not senator. I am so grateful for her participation and her ideas on this and coming up at the state level, and for our jumping on board immediately and for her help to help us. Is there any danger that this is going to be underfunded by the state? Or can we assume that the state legislature realizes how crucial this is and how well it's working? Should we contact our legis...? No, go ahead and tell us.
It's a fantastic question, Ernestine. If I knew the answer to that with 100% clarity, I'm thinking that Gil might move me over to our open job that Mr. Davis has vacated at this point. So while I certainly hope not, I can't say that with 100% accuracy, and I would say that to all of our voters out there, advocating is always an option that we encourage you to take.
Well, I sure do want to encourage families to cheer our legislators who have voted this and make it so that schools, because this is, this is so crucial for kids. In some ways, it's almost more crucial than physical health in that, well, it's just important. And I just thank Brenda Landwehr, and I thank the legislators that are voting. And please, keep it up, legislators, who are meeting in Topeka as we speak.
Thank you, Ernestine. Diane?
So when we listened to SuperSAC and the youth leaders panel from the students, a lot of repeat theme that we heard was that they did not feel that there was mental health choices for them, and they didn't know where to go. So I know somebody mentioned that there's QR codes for students. How are we getting that information out to students that they know where to access this help in their buildings?
Your timing on that, Ms. Albert, the timing on that question is exceptional. We were just discussing the same thing this morning at our district leadership team. And we were talking about how we think that we have done a great job of getting the word out through district newsletters, through different kinds of communication for our staff, but that we need to look at doing a better job for our students to make sure that they're getting that info. It was proposed by my friend Ms. Wendy Johnson this morning, that maybe this should be the topic for the next SuperSAC gathering, so we can gather information from students about what's the best way to get information out to all of you. We also talked about taking advantage of those email accounts that were mentioned earlier that they have.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Gil. Thank you, Vince. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Terri. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, International Institute for Restorative Practices.
Gil, do you want to introduce this topic?
Absolutely. We have Michelle and Brandon going to talk to us around restorative practices, what it is and what it is not. We know that there's been a lot of conversation around the topic of restorative practices. And as we head out of the pandemic, we definitely want to continue to have an intentional culture of building relationships, being kind to one another, since we know isolation did occur during the pandemic, especially if students were at home. So great presentation tonight by Michelle and Brandon. So I'll turn it over to Brandon and Michelle.
All right. Good evening, everyone. President Reiser, Vice President Hedrick, Deputy Superintendent Alvarez. I am Brandon Johnson, one of the executive directors of secondary schools.
I'm Michelle Ingenthron, the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools.
And we had the fortune to be with you all a week or two ago and go through a more detailed process and even walk you guys through some modeling, explaining, and have some good conversations. So our presentation tonight is going to be a little bit more brief, and if you guys have any questions, we'd love to have those at the very end. So what we're going to do now is play a quick video that our marketing team put together about restorative practices.
Beginning in the fall of 2022, all middle schools and targeted elementary schools in WPS will be trained in restorative practices through the International Institute of Restorative Practices. Additional schools, district leadership, and non-attendance center staff will receive training in the future.
So what is restorative practices? Restorative practices is the belief that decisions are best influenced by and conflicts are best resolved by those most directly involved in them. The restorative practices structure provides the framework in which we do this work. This is all about building community, connectedness, and relationships with students, teachers, staff, administrators, and families. The key is building positive relationships and restoring relationships when harm has occurred.
Why is Wichita Public Schools implementing restorative practices? The effect of the pandemic on the city of Wichita and our district have put stress on previously established relationships in our schools and in our community. We have to create opportunities to reconnect and build our community to support each other in the work that we do every day to ensure students are future-ready. We need to build positive relationships and repair harmed ones in our entire community, from adult to adult, adult to student, student to adult, and student to student. Restorative practices is a way to build relationships and community by design.
What are the benefits of restorative practices? Teachers and staff will have a more intentional chance to provide input and have an opportunity to discuss various possible courses of action that impact the school community. Students will also have an opportunity to provide input and to discuss possible outcomes. Restorative practices will help build a stronger community for all stakeholders of Wichita Public Schools.
Restorative practices is not about discipline, and it is not about removing consequences for actions or behaviors. There will still be discipline and consequences for negative actions or behaviors for anyone who disrupts the learning environment. We are designing a more proactive environment to build relationships, community, culture, and climate to help our students, teachers, staff, administration, and families to be connected to each other and our schools.
The goal is to have everyone in the Wichita Public Schools trained in restorative practices. More information will be shared as we continue to expand our professional learning in restorative practices for everyone.
We just want to send a shout-out to Wendy Johnson and her team. They do a great job creating those videos for us and making Michelle and I sound professional. We really do appreciate that. And I would also like to say, we have like, we have three other videos that we've created, and we have a plan to roll out all four videos throughout the rest of the semester to kind of educate and inform all of our communities so they know exactly what this is, what's coming, and how we're going to support that throughout the rest of the upcoming three
So you saw a little bit of this on the video. We want to be very clear in that restorative practices is not the reduction of consequences. Restorative practices is not the removal of consequences. There are still consequences for actions. It is not only about repairing harm, and it is not something we do to kids or to adults. It is also not talking in circles all day long, right? We've heard that a couple of times, too. So that is what it is not. The video hopefully shared with you what it is, right?
And just to recap what restorative practices is, it's the belief that decisions are best influenced by and conflicts are best resolved by those most directly involved. And really, what that saying is, is that we want to get into the habit of having accountability and ownership whenever we are a part of anything directly. So we don't want people to come in and steal conflict. We don't want people to come in and take away ownership from anyone who's involved in our system, whether that's students, teachers, administration, district-level people, they all have that. The second one is really a good focus for 259, which is us building community, connectedness, and relationships with students, teachers, staff, administration, and families. We have to make sure that we deeply understand each other, trust each other, and know that we have each other's backs because collective efficacy is the most powerful thing we can do in education. And then it's a process for stakeholders to feel like they belong, have a voice and agency, and we have many processes for that in all stakeholders.
So those last couple of bullets that Brandon talked about are very important to us as a district. And we have looked at some data. We had the Employee Engagement Survey, which 3,360 of our staff members replied to. We've looked at that data. We also have looked at some trends within Safe and Civil Schools data, which both parents, three, not both, parents, students, and staff fill out. And then we also have there for you on the screen some feedback from SuperSAC. When I talk about the Employee Engagement Survey, as a district leadership team, we dive into that, and we look at that data, and we take it to heart. So I want to share a little bit of that survey feedback with you. A third of our staff don't feel that they are given timely and relevant feedback from their supervisors. 60% of elementary and secondary employees rarely or never receive non-financial recognition for their contributions. And 25% of elementary and 39% of secondary employees don't feel students treat each other respectfully. That is not what Wichita Public Schools is about, right? And so we feel that restorative practices and those things that Brandon just talked to you about, and how we engage our community, how we engage our staff, how we create a sense of belonging, how we give voice to those in our district, and some agency to help us make some decisions, will change some of that survey data. And in fact, Brandon and I, last week, I think, met with the UTW pro reps, and I think we both have received some emails from teachers saying, one, just thank you for coming out and talking to us, right? Explaining this process to us, and thank you for listening. So I think already, we are seeing the benefits of doing those things that restorative practices will help us do as an entire district.
That's a great segue to our social discipline window, because what we're trying to do with restorative practices is to begin our walk with with. So all we're trying to do here is, when we make decisions, we do everything that we can to get those voices heard that are directly impacted by those decisions. So if there's a conflict or an issue at a school and how passing period is being ran, you know, Michelle and I don't just go in our office and we fix it. No, we go and we talk to all the teachers, we talk to the pairs, we talk to the students, and we say, tell us what's going wrong with passing. They give us feedback. We take that information, we come back to them. Is this what you told us? Is that correct? We get clarity from them. Once we have clarity, then we set the clear expectations to say, now we're going to do this based off of your feedback and the things that you want to see happening, and that is our walk to with. So we're doing those things together. We can just make those decisions, and we can be punitive. We could just go in and say, oh, teachers and pairs, don't worry about it. We'll just stand out in the hallway, and we'll take care of everything and make it permissive so they don't have to have any ownership. Or we could just ignore it and be in the not-box. But everything that we're trying to do here is to be not box. But everything that we're trying to do here is to be with each other. Let's all have a voice. We all own our processes. Nobody's going to fix this alone. It takes every single one of us. Our youngest kid to our oldest kid, our rookie teacher to our most veteran teacher, the shortest guy in the district, me, to the tallest guy in the district, Ben Mitchell, right? We all got to have those things. So we're all in this together. And we really think that this walking to with is a very powerful tool, giving voice, giving choice, and all those things within our processes.
One of the things that we do want to continue to get the message out on is that restorative practices is 80% proactive, right? And that's the walk to with. Again, I want to emphasize the idea of belonging, right? If you feel like you belong to this district, you belong and you have a sense of belonging within your school, things are more proactive, right? If you feel like you have a voice and you have, your voice has the power to make some change in our district. That's where we want to be. We want to be proactive. Proactive with staff, proactive with each other as district leaders, proactive with you as the Board of Education, and proactive with the kids that are in front of us every day. So you will see this continuum here ranges from informal to formal. Some statements and questions that all of us can use when we're trying to build a relationship, when we step out into the hallway and say, hey, I love those shoes, those are really cool. Do they come in my size? And if, you know, five-year-old looks at you like, are you crazy? No, they don't make them in your size, right? All the way to a more formal conference. If we have an issue then that we need to talk about, or even something positive in a way that we need to get together more formally and talk about how we move forward on something. So this is the continuum of restorative practices. And again, 80% proactive and 20% is responsive.
And we just want to highlight that the things that teachers have on here are really the informal processes up to circles. Formal conferences are really going to be focused on the support team that is not in the classroom. We will not be pulling teachers and saying, hey, this thing happened. Now you have to leave your classroom where you're teaching and go do formal conferences. That's really going to be people outside of the classroom. So we definitely don't want people to think that, oh, teachers have to do all this. No, this is all of us together and we'll train specific people to do the formal conferences process.
So again, within these processes, there are accountability and consequences for student behaviors, right? One of the key pieces of restorative practices is to separate the deed from the doer. Mr. Mitchell at Southeast has a great quote that if you watch some of our upcoming videos, he talks about, there is a consequence, but when the kid walks out of his office or the parents walk out of his office with their child for a suspension or something like that, he always says, I love you, I believe in you, and when you come back, we're ready for you, right? So there is that distinction. There are consequences. We will, we have board policies that we have to follow. Each building has a behavior plan that we will follow. Restorative practices training does not anywhere in it mention a reduction or the loss of consequences, right? We as people have to take responsibility for our actions. So, just a reassurance to anybody who's not necessarily that familiar with restorative practices at this point, that we will continue to follow district policy. Schools will continue to work their plans and we will have consequences for kids. And if they have to leave us for a little bit, when we come back, we're going to love on them and get them to where they need to be.
Now we just kind of want to walk through where we are right now. So in the current year, we already had a cohort one that has already gone through some upfront training. The actual buildings themselves will be trained this fall, but these people on the screen have already been trained this year or will be, including each of you at the board table right now. You will have an opportunity to have a two-day training for restorative practices. Mr. Alvarez has been trained, Ms. Ingenthron's been trained, I've been trained, many of the people sitting behind you have been trained. This is not something we are doing to teachers and students. This is something we are doing collectively. We will have an understanding of the language, we'll have an understanding of the practices. We are expected to treat each other like this. Michelle and I treat each other like this. My boss, Amanda Kingry, we literally just had a formal conference before this meeting with two adults. We are walking the walk and talking the talk. We're not just doing this to people. We're in this together. So next where we're going is in the fall of 2223, we will have 16 elementary schools, 22 middle schools. In July, we will have our SROs and our BOE security trained. We will have targeted training for our child study teams, assistant principals, principals, and some other jobs that are like that so they can have more formal conference training, how to do intervening in more serious situations. And then the last thing there is the trainer of trainers. And we want to highlight that because in our plan, the three-year plan that we have, we will have over 100 total trainer of trainers in Wichita Public Schools. So we will no longer need to spend ESER money or our own money to support restorative practices in the district. We will use the ESER dollars we have right now to be self-sufficient with restorative practices. And just to highlight that is the next two-year plan. So next August, so that would be August of 23, we will have 14 elementary schools, 15 secondary schools, and again, targeted training, trainer of trainers. And then the year after that, we will get as many elementary schools as we can get trained in August of '24. And then any district-level teams that we have not gotten trained, we will get them trained as well. So earlier we saw Fabian and his amazing self, we're going to get all of his people trained. Luke Newman's team, we're going to get them trained. We're going to get everybody trained. First person who hit me up was Terry. We're getting Terry's people trained. We're all in this. So that's the plan with this. We just want to make sure we give credit to where all this stuff came from, which is the books and International Institute for Restorative Practices website. Also shout out to our people, you know, all over the country, the IRP that have been supporting us, specifically Beth and Ryan. They've been great trainers for us. They spend a lot of time with us. We just want to make sure if they're listening. We appreciate them and everything they've done for us this year. And now, it's up to you all. What questions might you have for us?
Hazel?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I understand it is implemented already in our schools. When was it first introduced?
Last year, the board passed the initial contract using ESER dollars for us to have schools trained. We initially, our plan was to do the 14 elementary schools and the middle schools. Because of COVID, because of their training was a little disrupted because of COVID, we didn't train any staff members in schools. Instead, we shifted and all of the training was for principals, assistant principals, behavior interventionists. We had some other district staff that were trained with us from McKinney-Vento and some counselors and social workers. And so this, that training was a little different during this school year. That's why when we come back in August, we will have, we will still be on the contract that was approved prior. And so we've shifted some of that money to August so that those schools will be trained then. So it's everybody in the building. All the teachers, clerical, custodial, admin, child study teams.
And just on top of that, Ms. Stabler, we have Dr. Jan Fox-Petersen and Mr. Rob Simon, who are also trained in this and they've been doing this in the district for many years now. They are stationed out of West High and West High has been doing restorative practices for many years. I can't tell you the exact years. Maybe Mr. Alvarez or someone else knows the exact year. And then they also do some training throughout the, you know, throughout the district on their own, but with only two people in over 90 buildings, they couldn't do the full-fledged plan that this is. So this will be the first time that the entire district from top to bottom gets the full training.
Okay, so you talked about you did this training last year and the dollar amount that you spent last year is the same as what you were spending this year, what you're proposing for this year, the same amount?
Correct.
And so, that's a lot of money for such few schools. So, moving forward and implementing this in all the schools and the people who are going to be training and you're hoping that you won't, we won't have to do this again because we'll have our own trained people. What is, in the assumption that every year there are going to be updates and be new things, will we have access to all of the updates? I mean, through our trained people, will they be able to, and will it cost us additional dollars to get those updates?
This is really, and I'm just going to speak for myself. This is really a social science. The IIRP actually has a college. They have graduate college courses and it is based on the social sciences. So I don't know that there would be many updates. I think occasionally they update the book that they have. They have a couple of different books. But that, the trainings that we're doing are, I don't anticipate them changing because it is based on science, right? The social sciences.
I guess I'm asking if there's going to be continuing education for educators who are teaching?
Yeah, through our, through our trainer of trainers, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then I have one other question. So I've been asked several questions about this program and one thing that keeps coming up is a program called Second Step. Can you tell me the difference between the restorative practices and Second Step?
Second Step is a K8 curriculum that we have purchased and used in the district. And that curriculum aligns with the state standards for SECED that KSDE requires us to teach. So that curriculum is used to teach the standards from the state, just like our Journeys curriculum in elementary. We would use those selections to teach the reading standards and the language arts standards from the state.
So these are two different, completely different programs that have no relation to each other?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make, get that clear.
Yep.
And, let's see. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Hazel. Julie?
Thank you for this presentation. Also, I needed to turn on my mic. Thank you for this presentation. Also really enjoyed the longer version you gave us a couple of weeks back. And at that time, I expressed my support of the program and thanked you all for this initiative. I'm just going to give you a further affirmation tonight, I guess, is what you'd call this. But earlier in April, I had the opportunity to attend the National Association of School Board Conference. And the sessions that I attended that I felt like I learned the most and were most valuable were the restorative practices sessions and then also the working with kids of trauma situations. And both of the things interchange very well. The restorative practices information works very well with kids of trauma. At least that's what I understood them to say at the conference. And restorative practices was at the conference reinforced as something that is being taught and implemented throughout the nation. And they've had positive results and positive feedback. So, again, just kind of another little pat on the back that, you know, that you guys are doing a great job here in Wichita, but that this program has proven effective throughout the nation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Julie. Ernestine?
Well, I'm just real excited about this. Dr. Jan Peterson and Mr. Rob Simon trained the West High staff, including the administration and all the teachers. I learned about this program, whatever year was before the pandemic, how long ago that was, you know, 14 years, 300 years, whatever, whenever it was. And I was doing a presentation with a national group where I did a presentation and I used their information and their graph that they have, because it was a pilot project done at West High and it was approximately 10 years ago that they did that pilot at West High. And this, it was astounding because where it started out with a number of incidents, a number of students that were suspended or even in-school suspension and all that. And after they modeled, I mean, they marked on what happened, and to see the number of those incidents go down is astounding. And particularly is important when you get to know that of those people that are incarcerated in Kansas, in the penitentiaries, the more suspensions that a student has, the higher is their percentage chance, to the point that it's like well over 100% chance that they'll be incarcerated some year. So doing what we can to do things because it obviously doesn't enhance a child's education for them to be out of school by suspension. This practice has already been shown by the model that is done at West High where they did that pilot as excellent. We have had all these problems from huge budget cuts to superintendent changes to COVID. It is exciting to finally get to now, move from what was originally the pilot and now be able to spread it over to the rest of the schools. I'm excited about it and I think that probably many other school districts are going to watch Wichita and going to say, wow, we want to learn what it is that they did in Wichita because this is going to make a difference. This is truly going to make a difference.
Thank you. And I'd like to just kind of highlight what you said there. The way that I interpret what you just said was, restorative practices is the progress of building meaningful relationships so that down the road, we will have less suspensions out of school and out of school.
It's not because the schools suspend the students left that need to be suspended. They have fewer incidents.
Yes, because they have more meaningful connections and those kind of things.
The meaningful connections that happen between teachers.
Yeah.
I've been a teacher of teachers at the college level. And one of the things that I've always emphasized is that just because you have to give a student consequence doesn't mean you have to not be their friend. You can still be their friend and care and say, wow, I'm really sad. I wonder how you'll solve this. And then you go ahead to work with it. No, I, the issue of the non-suspension is because there is not a need, because the behavioral issues change, the relationships between the students and the staff change, because the students with one another begins to change, because some things happen that make it so suspensions aren't needed. That's what I meant.
Thank you. Thank you Ernestine. Cheryl?
Thank you for this presentation. I just wanted to follow a little bit up on the high schools because West was the very first school and it started somewhere around 2012 because I had just come onto the board when they were doing training and I actually attended one of the trainings with the staff at West High School. And they have grown since then. But it's also my understanding that the other high schools, Ms. Peterson and Mr. Simon have trained the other high schools as well so that they're already using this. Is that correct?
We can't say that all of the faculty and staff at any of the other buildings are fully trained in restorative practices. They have done individual trainings at the school where they have gotten pieces of restorative practices and used some of those strategies within the building in their classrooms. But the full two-day training that they are going to get in August, they have not had that.
Okay, because the August training is for middle schools and elementaries, is my understanding.
For this August and then next August, it'll be all of the high schools and then one additional middle school. Wells, Griffonstein Wells will be included in that as well.
So by the end of the following, the '24, '25 school year, we will have had everybody trained?
Hopefully.
We hope. There could still be some elementary schools who have not had the opportunity just because we have so many of them. But we are going to have all of the trainer of trainers.
Okay. But when will our trainer of trainers step in and start doing that training?
Well, so we'll have them all trained by the, no later than August of '24 because that's when we will stop using our ESER dollars. So by then, we will have all of our TOTs trained, trainer of trainers, and they will be able to backfill and do any other group or school that has not been trained. We can use them to do those trainings because they will be fully licensed by IRP.
And are we consciously trying to train people from multiple schools so that there is a trainer on staff at any given school?
Yeah. We, our hope is to have trainers all across the board. People from the district level, we will have potentially principals, assistant principals, people in safety services, maybe even from operations, right? We could have teacher trainers. We want teacher trainers. So there is a plan to, we hope, have enough interest that anybody that wants to be a trainer of trainer can do so. And it won't be just a, you know, a quick training. It'll be an initial training, but then there's a lot of follow-up because we want to make sure that we're doing this with fidelity.
Yeah, we've even budgeted in that the TOT training will take place after the end of the school year. It'll take place three days in a row and we will pay them a stipend to come and be trained. So if a teacher wants to be a part of that, they don't have to leave their classroom. They can be fully trained and they can be a member of our team as a TOT.
Good. Well, I look forward to future reports on how this training's gone and where we are moving in the future. And that whole piece of trainer of trainers, I think, is critical for this because it is expensive. And, and that whole piece of trainer of trainers, I think is critical for this because it is expensive. And if we can train our own people to carry on in year four, year seven, year 10, that's what we financially are going to have to do.
Right. And we're actually Louisville did that same model. So they had restorative practices for a few years and now they have their own trainer of trainers. So hopefully they're working out all the kinks for us, right? And we'll learn from some of the, their, I hope they don't have pitfalls, but if they do, we will definitely learn from those, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this report.
Thank you.
And thank you, Cheryl. Diane?
Thank you for the report. Um, how are we going to measure success of this program?
Uh, well, I, we talked about some of those data points, right?
Right.
So, um, and we've talked a lot about consequences in kids here too. But I don't want us to miss out on the idea of that social discipline window and the walk to with. I think anybody who has been a teacher in this district has felt like we do a lot of things to them, right? We have new initiatives and we train you and then we expect you to do them. And in the following year, maybe we have a couple of, of other new initiatives. You, in that survey that I, I shared with you, we have staff who feel like they don't have a connection within their building with their building leader. So I think some of that, that survey data will help us, right? I think if people are happy in their work and they feel supported and they feel like they, they belong and have voice and some agency, I would hope that some of our turnover data in staff would look different. We also will have some, um, some behavior data, I think, as we move over time to see less suspensions, less discipline referrals, not because, again, to Ms. Crable's point, not because they're not needed, but they're not needed in the sense of when you have this relationship, you're going to want to work hard for your teacher. You're going to want to work hard for your school, for your principal. We all love those feel-good stories about this teacher believed in me and this coach believed in me and look where I am now. I think we are at a turning point in our district where Brandon and I and some folks behind us and principals need to be those cheerleaders for teachers, right? We heard that loud and clear. So I think we will be able to have multiple data points. Some of them will be, uh, you know, perception data, right, on, on some surveys. But I think we will also have some behavior data to take a look at as well.
Okay, so the restorative practice framework doesn't map out specific data points that we should see a reduction in behaviors or there's not specific. We're hoping that we see a change in, in survey results. And maybe behavioral changes per building? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we, we will also have like a needs, not like, we have a needs assessment that each building will do. And that will be their baseline data point for us to know. This is where they started before they did restorative practices, implemented it and did those things. So each school will have a data point that's their baseline. And then we will track those data points over the year, two years, three years and see how did those data points move? Did they go up because that was a good thing or did they go down? Because depending on the data point itself, regression could be good, increase could be good.
Right. I just want to make sure we've got a, a framework to measure this.
And restorative practices actually gives us that needs assessment with all the data for each individual school so that we don't have blanket district stuff that just like gets masked. Each school will have their own report.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure we're not
Yes, ma'am.
basing this on feelings. Thank you.
Hazel?
You mentioned that the principals would be the, like the coaches of the, of their staff. Is that what you said? You wanted them to be the leaders and the coaches?
I made the analogy of, you know, when you have strong relationships, when people feel connected to their work or to a person or to an organization, you see amazing things happen. And so we are consciously doing work with our principals and for us to change the way we lead, right? To change the way we lead to the walk to with, to being proactive in communication and to building relationships within our building. So that, that was my comment.
Is, is there any reason that teachers or principals would feel like this is an added duty? That it would take away from other things that they need to be doing? Or is it, or how are you presenting it that it, they're not going to feel like, oh no, another thing that I have to try to do?
Sure. I mean, is, is it possible that someone could feel that way? Absolutely. I don't think that, I don't think it's impossible that someone couldn't feel like this is something other or additional work for them. You know, we, we not, we're not here to steal that perception from anyone. We definitely want them to have their real feelings and their emotions and what, what they're going through. Our hope is that when they go through the two-day training and they fully experience it for themselves, they will see that there isn't additional planning that is needed. It's just more intentional planning that they've already done, but setting it up in such a way that they get the result they want for more connectedness within their classroom. Cause teachers are already want to build great relationships with their kids. We're just trying to give them more tools in their tool belt to make that more effective for them. And we're not trying to say, oh, now you got to change everything you do. No, here, here's just a new little tool that you can put at the beginning, middle and end of your day so you can have more meaningful connections with your kids.
Okay, I just wanted to make it clear that it wouldn't be time-consuming and take away from their duty, other duties or that they would feel like they had more pressure on their shoulders because of the program.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent.
Uh, Diane, do you have any consent items you need to pull?
I do not.
Uh, Ernestine?
I do not.
I have no consent items to pull. Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Uh, Cheryl?
I have nothing to pull this time. Thank you.
Hazel?
No, nothing.
I would move that the consent agenda be adopted.
I would second that.
Moved by Stan Reeser, seconded by Ernestine. Motion carries six, zero. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, policy. Second review, learning services policies.
Uh, this is the second reading of this policy. There were no comments or questions or concerns, but that does not mean that you are not able to express that tonight. But we will vote on this policy, uh, up and down on, to adopt this policy. Are there any questions or concerns or adjustments that any board member would like to make on this policy? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the policy.
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Hazel. Motion carries six, zero. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under operations, school meal program options for 2022, 23.
And while we are waiting, uh, giving Susan time, not waiting, we are giving Susan time to move on down. I know Fabian's going to join us too. Great. Um, Gil, I'll have you.
Sorry to disappoint you.
I did not mean it that way. Gil, I'll have you introduce the topic.
You get a little glory and you start to get smarty. Our topic for today is going to be school meal program options. As you know, during the, the pandemic, we've had our, we've been able to provide meals for free due to some waivers and that has, for next year is not going to be the case. So we have Fabian here as well as Susan. They're going to talk to us about options for school meal programs for next school year, 22, 23.
Well, good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Deputy Superintendent Alvarez. Tonight, Susan and I have the opportunity to share with you some updates in regards to meal programming for next year. My name is Fabian Armendariz and I am the Division Director of Operations. And under my jurisdiction is nutrition services. It's one of the areas that falls under operations.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. Because Fabian is an award-winning presenter tonight, he's doing most of the heavy lifting. And I'm just here to help answer some questions that the board might have.
We all know who the brains is, right? Well, as we get started, first, why are we here? Bottom line is, and, and I do, I want to preface it before we get started that we have had a couple of small groups, a couple of small committees that have been helping us really kind of plan as we look at moving into this phase and looking at transitioning back from what was during the pandemic. So just know that this is the, what we're presenting to you today is, is stuff that we've been presenting and, and processing through a couple of small groups to help us really kind of prepare some pieces that, that we will share with you tonight. So as, as we get started, uh, in March of this year, Congress did not extend the child nutrition waivers into next school year. And basically what, what that means is that the USDA will no longer allow school districts to serve free meals to all students for the 22, 23 school year. And the USDA is, is a governing arm of the, the school nutrition programs. And so because of that, anything, any, any changes fall under the U S Department of Agriculture. I will preface this before we get going that we remain committed to making the best decisions for our school community. We understand how important meals are to the educational experience of our students. And because of that, we looked through every single option as, as we considered. And I hope that as we present this, you will see that in, in some of what we're bringing you here tonight. So just to give you a little bit of history, a little bit of background as to what has led us to this point. In the fall of 2019, every single school district in the country was operating under their regular processes. For us, it meant that we were operating under the National School Lunch Program or N S L P and the School Breakfast Program. What that means, it's a simple way of saying we were operating under free and reduced meal forms. In March 17th of 2020, that's the dreaded day that we all remember when schools in the state were shut down for the remainder of the 19, 20 school year. March 25th of that year, Nutrition Services then, our Nutrition Services Department began to serve meals or do the meal distributions to families under a USDA waiver that allowed us to do that. And that had several iterations from that point. I think we were serving meals a couple of times a week. For some buildings, we were serving once a week, but our commitment was to continue to serve students. And if you recall, our Nutrition Services was one of the few areas that continued to operate through the pandemic. Then in the fall of 2020, as we prepared for the 2021 school year, the USDA again got approval to continue on those waivers. So that meant that we would continue to be able to operate like we had been and it was under a, a summer program is, is how we were allowed to do that. So we were able to serve our in-person students in person and feed them at the buildings. And then for those students that were remote, we were allowed to do remote meal pickups, which we were doing at a couple of sites twice a week for those kids that were, were at home. So we operated and we teetered from that and we pivoted, I know it's a dirty word, several times throughout that time period as schools moved in and out of remote learning. We were able to continue to serve them and to provide meals. Then, um, again, so we operated that way all of last year. Then this school year, as we began the, the fall of 2021, again, the USDA continued. They extended those waivers for a second year. We were allowed to operate under what they call the summer seamless option. And that was only to allow us to give us some flexibility with menus. And so we were able to provide free meals to all students at no cost. And that's how we've operated the remainder of this, or all of this school year has been. Even though we're in person and we're at school, we've been able to provide every single student free meals that, that walks through our door. Now, as we get into March of this year, that is when Congress didn't appropriate the, the funding for these waivers. And so the USDA basically announced a return back to pre-pandemic operations. For us, that means a return, a potential return to, to free and reduced meal programming. So now we, that leaves us here, which is, you know, us presenting to you what we plan to do in light of, or where we're planning to operate in light of, of some of the, the studies that we've done and some information that we've received. So our plan for next school year is, it follows. First, we've done some studying and we understand some of the challenges in some of our families. So the Nutrition Services Department has been studying what it would cost for us to be able to provide universal free breakfast to all students. And we have been able to, to, um, through those studies, identify that we're able to provide universal free breakfast for next year without it creating a negative impact on the nutrition, nutrition services budget. What that means is it gives us the flexibility to continue doing some of the initiatives that we found successful through this time period. At the elementary level, we implemented breakfast in the classroom. And so we will be able to continue offering breakfast in the classroom at that level. For the secondary level, that means alternative breakfast models. And those alternative breakfast models range from second chance breakfast or grab and go. So for a lot of our secondary schools, we understand that a lot of our students get to school and they're not hungry when they get their first thing in the morning. But as their first hour progresses, they, they start feeling hungry. We know how important food is. And so we have carts located in several parts throughout the building. Those kids can pick up those meals and they can go to their next class and eat them, uh, eat, eat in class as they're, as they're getting their learning. And so we wanted to be able to continue some of these successful initiatives. And, and part of that, uh, part of implementing that universal free allows us to do so. The second part is allowing us to process direct certifications for all qualifying families for free lunch. And what direct certification means is those families that are receiving meal benefits from a different source. So whether they're receiving SNAP benefits and, and those of you that aren't familiar with what SNAP benefits are, those are like what we, we've known traditionally as, as food stamps. And so those families that are receiving those, those benefits or they're receiving, or students that are receiving benefits because, meal benefits because they are part of the foster care system or homeless, will be able to directly certify those students without their, their need to fill out a free and reduced meal form. And so again, that's part of what this process is, is it allows us to process those directly certified families, those families that are getting those benefits from elsewhere without them having to fill out the form. Then for everyone else, we're looking at a return for lunches to re-implement the free and reduced meal form or the meal benefits form. So every family at that point will need to complete a meal benefits form in order to qualify for free meals. I want to reiterate, we are not taking away free meals from everyone or the access to free meals. Every family has the opportunity to gain access to free meals by filling out a free and reduced meal form. And if they qualify, they will receive free meals for, for the school district. So again, uh, from the school district. So I, I think a lot of people are under the assumption that, that we're taking away that every family has a right to apply for those meals and, and receive them if they qualify. So as we move then, as we look at, um, C E P. We've talked in great deal about C E P. We did a presentation a couple of years back about C E P. C E P is called the Community Eligibility Provision. What it does is it allows schools or groupings of schools that serve low-income students to offer free meals to all students within that building. There are two different criteria. In order for a school district to qualify for C E P or a school grouping, they must have a 40% identified student percentage or I S P in the year prior to implementation, or that's April 1. And what that I S P number is based off is, is based on the number of directly certified kids. So those kids that I spoke about earlier that are receiving SNAP benefits or they're receiving meal benefits from elsewhere, if 40% of the students enrolled in a particular building receive those benefits, then they would qualify, then that school would qualify to, to, for C E P. But just because they qualify doesn't mean that there isn't a negative impact to the nutrition services budget. And so we've been talking to a couple of organizations and their recommendation is for us to actually use a 50% I S P. That means 50% of those students that attend that school receive that direct certification in order for the nutrition services budget to break even. And so in order for us not to go in the red, we need to operate or only move, only to potentially move those schools that are 50% or higher. Otherwise, the nutrition services budget would start going in the red. Does that make sense? So then, as we move and we looked at the data, we pulled data on April 1st. We sent it to K S D E and K S D E actually forwarded us to an organization called Share Our Strength, which is a, a hunger advocacy organization. But they specialize in assisting school districts in qualifying for C E P. So we sent them all the data that we had. And basically, less than 30% of our school district, a total of 27 schools, would qualify for C E P under the recommended 50% I S P identifier. Again, in order for us to break even for the nutrition services budget, not go, not to go in the red, those are the maximum number of schools that we could qualify under C E P. If the entire district was to go under C E P and there are a total of and there are a total of around 45 schools that would qualify, that meet that 40% criteria, that actually qualify, our, our district would, could lose up to $9 million, our Nutrition Services budget, if we were to move with that percentage. Now, based on some of the committee work that we did, because of some of the challenges that we would face in implementation, one of the recommendations was that, that was made was to look at full groupings of levels. So what would happen if all of our elementary schools, if we were to move forward with CEP for them? And as you can see, that number for all elementary schools to move to CEP, the Nutrition Services would, would lose about $4 million. So we would have a shortfall of that amount. So as we reviewed the data and we reviewed all of this information, on top of when you look at the challenges of operating in dual system program, meaning part of our schools would be CEP, part of our schools would be free and reduced meals, there are just too many challenges with mobility and tracking and ensuring that our students fill out, our families fill out the free and reduced meal form. And so we, the, at this point, CEP is just not a viable option for our district. So that, that again leaves us with a return back to operating under the, the School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program, meaning we return back to free and reduced meal forms. So as we look at implementing the plan, we've had these two groupings of, of committees that have been assisting us to kind of help and, help us problem solve some of this. First, we are looking at communicating to principals this week. We've already given them a heads up that we've been analyzing all of this. And so we have Principals Learning Academy this week. So we will be presenting to them our plan to return back. We're also going to reach out to all clerical staff at the end of this week because our clerical personnel are really at the forefront of, of this change. They are the ones that are helping with enrollment, that are assisting families with filling out the, the forms and those enrollment processes. So they're going to be crucial to, to us re-implementing. And we also understand that just like we have a lot of families that have never had to fill out a free and reduced meal form, we also have a lot of staff members, including a lot of new clerical personnel, that have never lived this process before. So this is all brand new to them. So we're looking at, at, at really training them. The second piece is we're looking at initial communication to families coming out here in May. So here, in the next couple of weeks, we've already met with our strategic communications partners, Wendy Johnson and her team. And so they're working on building a communications plan so that we not only release this information, but we're continuing to share reminders to our families throughout the summer. We'll share information as part of those communications about free breakfast, universal free. We're going to encourage families to complete the free and reduced meal form. But that form is not made available until July. And so we're going to have to remind families about this. But again, the USDA does not make that form available until July. So we're, we're gonna, we're, we're just gonna send reminders to families. We're gonna build some FAQ information that we'll send out to families. But again, the form is not, is not, does not open until July. And then, and we'll, we'll send reminders because there are more benefits to filling out that, that, that meal benefits form than just the free and reduced meals. You also receive reduced fees in, in other areas too. So there's more benefits to filling out the form than just simply receiving free meals. And so we're going to continue to highlight some of those reminders as part of our communications plan. The, the free and reduced meal form, we're looking at embedding it as part of the online enrollment process to make it a more seamless process than it's been before. And Rob and his, and our IST team have been working on kind of looking and problem solving with us. That's the other small group that we've been working with to try to figure out a, a seamless way to, to, to get this done. And then the last piece that I mentioned is really looking at clerical for, on our Nutrition Services for, for our clerical staff. And that will happen not only in May, but then we're looking at doing a refresher in August prior to enrollment. There's a lot of moving pieces that are tied to this. And so we've been trying to anticipate anything that's happening. We understand it's, it's a significant change. So there's going to be a lot of communication and a lot of education that's going to happen both internally and externally in order for us to, to do this successfully. So we're looking at all of those options.
I think it's important to, to reiterate that this is not a decision that Nutrition Services is making. This is not a decision that Financial Services is making. This isn't a decision even that the board locally is making. This was a decision made at the national level where Congress did not appropriate funds to continue the waiver program. So once those funds were removed from the budget, all school districts across the country have no choice but to return back to the traditional lunch programs, meal programs that they had pre-COVID. So I think that's an important point, especially for those that perhaps don't follow school budgeting very closely, is that there, there is a particular funding source for Nutrition Services, and it's coming from the USDA. Additionally, Fabian mentioned the Nutrition Services Fund in the red. There is a board policy that prevents Nutrition Services from operating in a negative balance. So they must self-sustain by board policy. They must, the revenues that they intake and the expenditures that go out must break even. So those were two points I think we wanted to make tonight, too.
So just to close before we open up questions, again, just, just a reminder that we are not eliminating access to free meals. Families will continue to have the opportunity to apply for meals through the free and reduced meal form. The second piece is we will be offering universal free breakfast at all levels for the, for next school year. And the last piece is the, the data collected surrounding the free and reduced meal form. That data is protected from a confidentiality standpoint, as we all know. And there are very few people, and they have to sign a waiver in order to have access to that information. So for those families that are a little bit nervous about providing that income information, it is highly protected. It is one of the most confidential pieces of data that we operate under as a school system. So for those families that are a little bit concerned about that, just, just a reminder that it is very confidential, so. And on that note, I'm going to open it up for questions.
I had a couple of questions. First, on the Community Eligibility Provision, which by the way is the most horrible name ever given to a, a food program. I'm not sure where they came up with that name, but anyway. If we went 100% CEP, Community Eligibility Provision, for the whole district, is that where you come up with a $9 million shortfall? Or is there reimbursement from the CEP?
The reimbursement is based on a per meal. And so at a 50%, the reimbursement that you're getting for those meals allows you to break even, to make up for those kids that maybe wouldn't have qualified based on that ISP identifier. And so that's where that 50% comes from. Anything below 50%, again, that you start getting into the red. So you, the, the reimbursements that are coming in are not enough to outweigh the, the total cost of, of providing those meals.
So we can declare a school CEP, but we could not declare the entire district CEP?
That, that is correct. I mean, based on the data that we have, there's a total, I think, of 45 schools that meet that 40% or higher criteria that could technically become CEP. Again, that would mean that the district, and I, I believe we looked at the numbers, it's around $5 million that the district then would end up having to fill in for the Nutrition Services budget because they would, they would go in the red if we were to move forward with those schools.
And we did try a CEP, again, I'm just gonna repeat the name, so just, just in case anybody happens to tune in at this time, Community Eligibility Provision. If we did try a CEP pilot program, what was the timeline we did that?
We did it during the 2019, 20 school year. So we ended it right in the middle. I will say, you know, when you're managing one or two schools, it's, it's easy to manage. But a dual system program like this, where you're looking at 28 schools under one program, and then you're looking at, you know, 70 or so under another, it would be incredibly challenging to manage. Just even thinking mobility, we're a high-mobility district. So I attend a CEP school, I move to a non-CEP school. I'm used to receiving free meals. Now I've got to go in and, and fill out a free and reduced meal form or vice versa. So there are just some barriers that, that are, are pretty challenging if, if we're looking at implementing on, you know, a third of our schools being under one program and then the other two-thirds being another.
Susan, what do we spend on? I, I think maybe the board needs a pie chart on revenue and expenditures. Like where do all the revenues, where do all the expenditures for our school lunch programs go? And how much is, where, where do the revenues come from, maybe in the future? Cause this, so the CEP program got cut short because school buildings got closed in March of 2020. So we, and then, so during those months, you found that it was fairly easy to manage, but we were only managing two schools. Were we, was it more, at those two schools, was it more expensive to run a CE, E, CEP program? Or was it more expensive to run a free and reduced lunch program?
I have not pulled comparison numbers in terms of, of that piece.
Because I, I thought that was part of the, of the project was to, the pilot, was to see if we could try to get a comparison on there. And I know it kind of got cut short and I never did get a, I never did hear the number. So I was just curious about that. So in summary, what I, what I think what we're saying is, number one, we're always still going to have the overall umbrella policy that no child's going to go hungry with our school nutrition program, correct?
Yes, we, we're looking at, again, feeding as many students as possible. Families will need to apply, again, for that meal benefits form as a part of that. So we're not eliminating that access. And then we're looking at that universal free breakfast as a part of that, too.
And that's, that, that's what I was gonna say. And number two, we will have the universal breakfast program. And then the free and reduced meal application is confidential. I mean, as much as anything, I guess, could be, is confidential nowadays. But there, the fear that some parents have on filling that out when it comes to income, how does that, if they don't fill it out, how does that specifically hurt us on getting reimbursed?
Well, if, if they don't fill out a free and reduced meal form and they show up on the first day of school and they eat, then they would be incurring lunch debt from, from the first day. And that isn't retroactive. So they may choose to fill out a form five days in. But again, that debt that was incurred, that meal debt that was incurred for the first five days, they're still responsible for paying that.
So if they do not fill out that free reduced lunch application, then we have to assume that they are taking on the full cost of that school lunch, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
If they choose to take it.
Which is why the communication strategy with, as we move back is so critical so that families do understand those consequences of not completing the form if they are eligible for a free meal program or a reduced meal program. Cause if they don't complete it, day one meals are full pay.
Thank you. Hazel?
So you said that, that in July, the form will be available. What is the, is there a cutoff date where they can no longer apply for free meals or reduced meals? So they can go the whole, they can go the first semester and not apply? And then they can, oh, good, okay, absolutely. All right.
At any point, they can apply for those.
And if their situation changes. That's why it's so important to have that available at any time because your, your economic situation could change, a parent could be laid off, a family member could, you know, lose a job in some form or fashion, a health issue. So anytime a situation changes, come, come, complete a, a new form. And again, remembering that that form not only benefits for meals, but if, if a, a, a parent or guardian releases that information for use for fees, basically, students come to school with a very low fee obligation. I think the max is, is $20.
Thank you, Hazel. Diane?
What was the decision to provide free breakfast for everyone?
Um, part of the transition, again, we're feeling that families were gonna, we're gonna go back to this, this program. The other piece was really tied to some of those initiatives that we felt were, were successful during the pandemic. Breakfast in the classroom, as much as maybe there may be a handful nasiers here and there, but there's, there's great benefits to providing that, that, that breakfast in the classroom, as well as that second chance breakfast. It allows us to be able to continue with, with some of those initiatives also.
What is that doing with our budget for?
For Nutrition Services? It's not, it's not gonna put them in the red. I mean, I, this, we, we looked, we did a, a full cost analysis over this. And the, the costs that's coming in from the, for the breakfast meals, the reimbursement that we feel that is coming in should allow us to be able to offset the cost for those students that maybe wouldn't have qualified for free and reduced meals.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl? Hang on one second, I'm gonna make sure you're. It's on, okay. Okay, sorry.
To, to, our breakfast will be free for everybody. It's the lunches that they will not be able to, you will, we don't go in the whole $9 million or $4 million are way too much money.
That is correct.
Okay. And, and again, we want to figure out, and a whole system of, I know we're talking to parents in May and they can't fill out the form until July, which is basically about when we start enrollment again. But how important that, that free and reduced form lunch. Many parents will have been familiar with it because it's been gone two years and they may have had a student in this system longer than that. But many will not. They will totally not understand why. And the placement of where that form is in the enrollment package is critical. Are, are you looking at moving that very close to the front?
We are looking at moving it. I am not quite sure exactly where we can. There's, there's some systems pieces that we're working through right now. But we're working on making that process as seamless as possible. As a matter of fact, Rob just scheduled a meeting not too long ago to have us discuss some of that. So we are, we are.
Yeah, cause the, the earlier it is in the enrollment process, the greater the odds are that we will have people fill it out. So, all right, this is not what I wanted to hear because I think we all want our kids to be able to feel like they can come to school and get food. But, but this is not something we have a choice on. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you all. And, and again, just to reiterate, what was, a lot of people are under the impression that we as a system are making these decisions. And that's a reality, we are left with some of this. And again, this is based on everything, all the feedback that we received, what we feel is best.
Well, and even us giving free breakfast, that's not paid for by the government. We just feel like we can cover that because of where we are in free and reduced lunch forms and so on. Correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And kudos to David Paul and their, their, our Nutrition Services Department because they really do a great job of managing budget and managing costs and all of those pieces that go in. Cause this, this was not just a simple, hey, we can do this. Everything from labor to labor increases to all of those pieces were considered. Yeah, food costs and, you know, and that is tough to, so we shot pretty high in terms of food costs because right now everything's increasing. So kudos to them for the great job that they've done in terms of keeping our, our, our Nutrition Services budget.
And I'm thankful that we're able to give a free breakfast because we at least can assure when a kid gets to school that they have something in their tummies. And, and that second chance at high schools is great because you're right, high school kids don't wake up until about the middle of first hour, so.
I don't wake up until the middle of first hour.
And, and Cheryl, you made a good point. And I, I think we all need to make a mental note of it is May. It's gonna be a lot of time between now and enrollment time in July. So we need to probably think of a couple of ways to remind the public again, in, before July, before enrollment starts, about the change that is necessary, necessary by the, the actions of the government, by federal government. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. And there's no rush on that, if supplying the, maybe even before enrollment time, just get a better overall view of how much the lunch program, how it's divided up between revenue and where we, and our expenses. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
Gil?
No report.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, Board of Education, report and requests.
I'll start this in this time. Hazel, do you have any reports or requests?
I do. I was fortunate to be able to attend quite a few of my school's Good Apple Awards this year. It was very exciting and really nice to see the teachers' surprise and, and the staff enthusiasm and recognizing them. I went to the Stealth, am I saying it right? Lights On After School Program at Exploration Place. Lights On After School Program at Exploration Place. I was able to attend a PTO meeting at McLean Science and Technology School. I had some great tours at Heights and Chisholm. In Heights, I was very impressed with their shop and their their welding room. It was very impressive. I had the opportunity to spend the day at Earhart on Earth Day, and my family was there to help make a presentation to the kids, and that was very rewarding. I had also an opportunity to serve as a barista, which I've never done before, at Horace Mann for teacher appreciation and wellness. I went to the Riverside Annual Art Show, and I'd like to commend the students and the staff and the PTO for hosting such a great event. It was very well organized, and I was very impressed. And I'd also, again, like to remind everyone that the Indian Education Powwow will be held on May 14th at the Mid America All-Indians Center. That's all.
Thank you, Hazel. Cheryl?
I've been out in buildings and and our district's doing great things, just no doubt about it. Good things for kids.
Thanks, Cheryl. Julie?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to go to the Stealth Program and had the opportunity to go to the Stealth Program and Good Apples for several of my schools, but the that the activity that I did that I want to really highlight and mention in more detail was Earth Day at Earhart. And I sat around a lunch table with a bunch of kids and just loved having conversation with them. Such bright and articulate kids that love going to school at Earhart. It was just so much fun and so rewarding. And then I was assigned to two students from a classroom. I was connected up with those two students, and they were in charge of giving me a tour and taking me around and showing me the activities that were being done for Earth Day. And kids that were so excited about Earhart, so excited about the activities for Earth Day, so engaged in that program and and in saving the environment. And I just was so excited and so pleased at the great things that our district is doing for kids and and just so pleased that they that those kids love going to school at Earhart. In addition to my report, I have two requests tonight, Mr. President. My first request is that I would like to request that staff begin the process of bringing our school board boundaries within the population requirements that were required per KSA Section It calls for redistricting of our district if any board member district is above 5% of the average population of all the board member districts within the school district. And I believe that District 2, my district that I represent, is more than 5% above the average population. And so it is my understanding that per KSA Section 721077 that we're required to to relook at that. So as a part of this request, I would like staff to bring some map options to the BOE for us to vote on within 60 days in order to comply with the statutory requirement. And then, secondly, I would like to ask staff to provide the Board of Education with a timeline and a process necessary to put the issue of district-only elections on the November general ballot for voters. This would allow our district's voters to determine whether we move to a system that votes per district or whether we keep the current system for voting of school district members.
Thank you, Julie. My only report is the school visits that I was on those last month, or I must echo Hazel and Cheryl's comments and Julie's. They my favorite line now is there's miracles, large and small, happening in every one of our schools almost every single day. And every day I'm I leave one of those visits, I'm just amazed and re-energized on the job that we have and looking forward to. I've got several visits for the rest of this school year, along with the graduations in May. So it should be a fun and an exciting month of May. Ernestine?
Well, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I really know that we're doing all this wonderful stuff that's happening, but it's because we've got such great teachers and we've got all that backup folks, all the way from secretaries and custodians and clerks and people making the meals and all of that that helps to make it. But I really am impressed with what is going on in the schools. Also, I attended an event in which our superintendent was awarded an award by the group called Art That Touches Your Heart, I believe is the name of the group. And I think we'll do something maybe at a later time to acknowledge that. So rather than say any more about that, I'll leave it alone. That's all.
Thank you, Ernestine. Diane?
So I also attended a number of Good Apple Awards at the schools in my district, just to celebrate the teachers and the hard work that is going on in the school buildings. And then I also attended Earhart Elementary for Earth Day and had a great school tour by one of our our students who used to attend there. And he was so excited to take and Hazel and joined us with it, but just take us around the school, take us around the the yards and show us the greenhouse, the pond, the bees that they've got a hive that the bees can come inside the school. And so it was actually learned quite a bit about bees. So Breckin Pierce was his name, and he did a fantastic job of giving us a school tour visit. So it was a very enjoyable day.
Thank you. And it's very cool that we'll soon be saying the same things about about same thing about Coleman Middle School since we approved that, basically, that pathway, so.
Yeah, and I had a moment to actually speak with the PTO president and a bunch of the PTO members, and they also expressed excitement that that there was a middle school that the students could continue on. So it was very impressive to see how much the kids are learning, very practical things. So.
Thank you very much. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, new business?
Any new business from this board? Seeing none. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, executive session?
I move the board recess into an executive session to discuss negotiations between the BOE and United Teachers of Wichita pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations exception under Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 9:30.
Before we vote on that, do we really feel that it's even gonna need to take 30 minutes without?
Oh, 15 is enough?
I think 15 will cover this topic.
Okay, cool. Then we'll be back at 9:15. Open meeting resume in this room at 9:15.
Motion carries 6-0. We'll be back at 9:15. Education is returning from executive session. No action needed or taken. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, executive session?
I move the board recess into an executive session for purposes of consulting with the board's attorney on a matter involving potential litigation, which is deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 754319B2. And the board will return from executive session to this room at 9:30.
I think they I think they said they only needed 10 minutes.
Oh, did they say 10 minutes? Okay, this is great. We're cutting them all short. So 9:25.
Moved by Julie, seconded, sec, yep. Moved and seconded by Cheryl, sorry. Motion carries 5-0.
9:25.
9:25. The Wichita Board of Education is returning from executive session. No action needed or taken. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl to adjourn. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.[1788.87]